I'm gonna bring the meeting to order. Roll call.
Dr. Genovasi.
Here.
Mr. Kapadia.
Here.
Dr. Liliston.
Here.
Dr. Resnick.
Here.
Dr. Wilson. Dr. Lill. And Mr. Peters is here. So we do have a quorum.
Okay, can we stand for the flag salute? The New Jersey Open Public Meetings law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has cause notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Hopewell Valley News and The Times on January 4th, nineteen, nineteen, yeah, whoo, 2024. This meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon Fios. The board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. The meeting is being recorded for the purpose of board review, future reference, preparation of meetings, minutes, and viewing on YouTube, Bull TV, and the school district's website, Members of the public who intend to participate in public comment, we ask that you sign in prior to speaking. This will assist us with our record-keeping. So I would like a resolution to approve the minutes of the December 11th regular meeting, and also the minutes of the January 3rd reorganization meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Any comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposing or abstaining? Minutes pass? Next, we're gonna have a report from our student representative.
Now that we're almost through January, we are at the end of the second marking period. Earlier this month, over a hundred students were inducted into the National Honor Society. There are also lots of exciting things happening in athletics. The boys' ice hockey team hosted their annual salute-to-service game. The boys' basketball team beat Trenton, beat Trenton High for the first time in program history, and several and several members of the winter track team earned medals at the county championship over the weekend. Rehearsals for the spring musical "How to Succeed in Business Without Really Trying" are also underway. We've had several important visitors to the high school this month, including the First Lady of New Jersey, Tammy Murphy, who met with our Youth Environmental Society Club, and the Big East Commissioner Val Ackerman, who met with our girls' and boys' basketball team. And finally, this Wednesday, the high school is hosting an open house and academic planning information session for all eighth-grade parents and guardians to introduce them to the high school and provide more information about course selection. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from our board? Yeah, awesome, then you are free to go. Thank you so much for the update. Next, we would like to have a student recognition.
Good evening. Mr. Calavita, would you mind putting the slides up? Okay. Good evening. My name is Carolyn McGrath, and I teach art at the high school, for those of you who don't know me. In the fall of 2022, I learned that the Fifth National Climate Assessment, which is a report that comes out of the White House, it's a scientific report about the impacts of climate change in the United States, and I learned that they would be accepting artwork for the first time for this report. I was very excited about that. I shared this opportunity with students in my art club, because it didn't seem to fit at that time into my classes, and I thought, let me try it with the art club. I have a really wonderful group of students who are in the art club, and several of them are here tonight. So, we spent many weeks exploring the actual report. We got to see the draft report. We learned about different aspects of climate change and found out how it's impacting our country. Students then selected a focus area that was their choosing. They also selected art media of their choosing. And once, they worked on this for several weeks, and I sort of gave minimal guidance, but gave guidance, and once they finished, they took photos of their artwork, they wrote artist statements, and they submitted their applications. And again, that was 2022, fall of 2022, and so we waited, and we waited anxiously, awaiting, and then we found out that three students from our school were accepted into the report. Just this last fall, on November 14th, 2023, next slide, please, President Biden held a press conference announcing the publication of the NCA V, which is what it's referred to, and the inclusion of student artwork, as well as professional artwork, in that report for the first time. He actually had a student introduce him, and I was like, ah, it should have been one of our kids, but can't complain. It was pretty awesome to see him talking about the report and the inclusion of the art in that report for the first time. Next slide, please. NCA V received more than 800 submissions from both professional and youth artists. Only 92 were selected, and from that, 10 were awarded prizes. Three students from Hopewell Valley Central High School were notified that they were selected for inclusion into the report, which is pretty amazing. And one of the three was one of those 10 prize winners. And what I'd like to do is share their artwork with you this evening. At the end of the slides, I have a QR code, which, and a website, so if you want to go check out the website, see where it's at. So the student artwork is both featured in this climate gallery at the end of the report, but it's also infused throughout the report, which is pretty remarkable. And in speaking with the people in charge of organizing this whole thing, the impetus behind it is that art has really powerful impact, and the ability to move people in the way that perhaps just data does not, and I can attest to that. So, if we could go to the next slide, please? So, the first slide is by Julia Yu. And Julia's piece is called "The Overtaker." It's an expressive painting, you can see her artist statement there, that looks at environmental impacts of animal agriculture. It's quite beautiful, it's incredibly beautifully painted, but it also has a very somber and serious mood to it. Thank you for asking, because I didn't want to be too fussy, but yeah. It's gorgeous, and it's about this big, so, and it's in my classroom, so if you want to come see it, it's there, yep. And, the next piece. The next piece is by Ananya Anil, who's in grade 10, and Ananya, who also goes by Tara. This piece is called "Desperate Ocean." It's an artwork that focuses on the impact of climate change and human activity on the North American right whale. What was really cool about this piece is there's actually a section in the climate report about the right whale, and so this heads that section. It's really quite remarkable. And this piece both shows a sense of sadness, as well as a sense of hope. And then, last piece is by Amelia Kloon, and this was the one of the 10 prize winners. And Amelia won for a piece called "A Cautionary Tale," and this centers on a young person making art against a backdrop of gray sky and factories. The art shows both a sense of loss, as well as a sense of possibility. And Amelia, you wanna stand, so we can acknowledge you? And I also want to thank, I don't think she's here, my colleague Laura Durr, who is teacher of these three students, highly get to work with them in an art club, and without Laura's guidance, I don't think we'd see the same level of quality of work, so I also want to thank Laura, who's not here. But, that's it, thank you so much.
I don't know whether any of the students wanted to say anything about your work, not to put you on the spot or anything. It's okay. Did any of the board members want to?
I just want to say, those pieces of art were beautiful, and what was even more beautiful was the artist's statements. To see such civic activism through art from such young people is just amazing, and I'm inspired by all of your work, and also a shout-out to Ms. McGrath, who's a phenomenal art teacher, so thank you all.
And I'll also add, coming from an institution, that's a STEM institution, the combination of this critically important topic with art to reach many more people is just amazing, so you should really be proud of yourselves for making this type of impact. And we are gonna move on to, well, next is the board president report, our board president is not here, so I'm taking over, and I do not have any comments, so we will move on to our superintendent's report.
Thank you, and I want to congratulate our students again. I've been celebrating your beautiful accomplishments for months now. I wanted to bring you in and share this with the whole community. Thank you for all your remarkable work. I know that you don't like to release your paintings, but I have a couple, my eye on a couple, so we'll talk price, and see, see if you want to release one of those for sale, so we'll talk. I know, but maybe we'll have to, we may have to print it out. We can print them, we can make prints. So thank you, and I know you may have to get back to your work. So I'm going to share my superintendent's report now. I know that I've received a few emails about our e-learning days, and I've responded to some of those emails, but I thought it would be better if I just talk you through it, because it is confusing to read and writing, and this is, it's been quite a history and a legacy around why we have these days in our calendar, so I wanted to walk everyone through that. So today, we're going to, I have an agenda here, I'm just gonna back up. One, I want to shout out Muslim Heritage Month, we'll talk about that briefly. I'll explain the e-learning days, and then I'm gonna end up with a reminder about our strategic planning meeting. I want to first say thank you to our facilities and grounds people who worked very hard during our snow days, and also leading up to that, maintaining this room. I don't know if you noticed, it was another color when you came in here, last week, it was blue. We've lightened it up, and we've also, on the back wall, put our new mission statement. So the new mission statement, Mr. Calavita isn't there yet? This was what was voted on and written by this community, is now, "The Hopewell Valley Regional School District strives to foster excellence in education by empowering our students to positively impact the global community through a commitment to responsibility, respect, and kindness." So that is the mission statement that we all created together, and we're very proud of it, so now it's displayed very prominently on our wall. So thank you to everyone that, and Mr. Becker, who helped put that decal up there this morning, so we finally are all set, so thank you. Okay, so this, January is now moving forward, recognized as Muslim Heritage Month. That was signed into law by Governor Murphy on January 11th. I was very fortunate enough to be invited to a celebration in Princeton yesterday at their Muslim center in Princeton, where I got to learn from some historians, some of the history that I did not know about Muslims in this country. One of the things I did know, however, is that we have in New Jersey one of the largest populations of folks that follow Islam than any other state in the nation, so I think it's time, I'm very excited that we are now recognizing this, and we have been looking for ways to implement this diversity into the way we teach history, and I look forward to collaborating with some of these experts that shared some very interesting history about even Muslims being part of the slave trade, Muslims being in this country going back way, during the transatlantic slave trade, where they took many of those Africans from West Africa, and many of them practiced, followed Islam. I don't know how many of you saw roots when you were a kid, but when the father holds kizi up, that is a Muslim tradition, and the name kizi is Islamic name. So that history is there, it's interesting to reclaim it, also the language and all the science and the accomplishments that were made by those Africans before they became enslaved here in this country. So, looking at the slave trade being, you know, a horrible thing, but also that lost history of what resilient people the Africans were, and especially these Muslim Africans, to kind of squirrel away and keep their traditions even when all that was being stripped from them. So I'm looking forward to celebrating some of that history as we move forward, but I did want to acknowledge that tonight. Okay, so the e-learning days, let me dig into these, okay? I'm gonna back up so you can see this. So the tradition of our staff working 150 days goes back as far as we can trace it, and I worked very closely with HR to find the origins of this, but we couldn't go back any further than, you know, 2001. So since that time, staff in this state, this district has been contracted for 185 days. Three of those days are professional development days that happened that long day in October, and the two that happened in the summer before they returned back to school. And then the rest of the days, 182, are instructional days. Hopewell is not the only district that goes over 180 days, but this has been our tradition, and probably because we never have done, as a district, the minimum of anything that the state requires, we always do more, right? And so that's always been the case. So, the teacher's pay is amortized over those 185 days, and the expectation is that they work those days. So in the past, when, before we had e-learning days, which I'll talk about in a moment, if the school closed and we had a snow day, and they were traditional snow days like we remember, where you played out in the snow, teachers didn't work, students didn't work, it was before computers, right? We didn't have these. We added those days somewhere in the year, either they took away from a spring break, or they added them on to the end, they had to be made up. That happens in every district everywhere, right? That happens still. So then, in 2016, when we went one-to-one, really 14, but by 2016, we had pretty much a device in every kid's hand, the superintendent at the time, Dr. Tom Smith, had this vision that because we were one-to-one, students did not need to lose days anymore, we could go virtual. He had this idea of virtual before the pandemic. Kids could literally log into our student management system, learning system, on-course, and they could do their work at home asynchronously, and we won't lose a day. He went and lobbied the state, the state said, "We don't recognize your little virtual day, sorry, but we had the extra two days." They said, "You can do whatever you want with your extra two days, but you need 180 in-school learning days." So Dr. Smith worked with the community, he worked with the teachers, and then we wrote in their contract at that time, in 2017, that we would have these days where students and teachers continued to learn, and we didn't lose those days and have to add them to the end of the year or take from spring breaks. So that has been the tradition since 2017, and we have used them since then. Then we had the pandemic happen, and teachers and students, and you all, were online with kids for two, two, three years, with the hybrid and kids going on quarantine, and the teachers' union and the teachers were fed up, a lot of parents were even seeing articles about districts giving teachers SEL days, giving students SEL days, and we were getting those emails, and so the union said, "Why can't we have those two e-learning days back this year, and we have an extra day?" The board accommodated that, I added the days, it was, you know, you had like a month's notice, that was not enough notice for parents who worked, so we actually had a daycare day, where I took kids on a field trip that day, I came in and watched kids that day, because, you know, people have to go to work, I get that. So the board decided, if we're gonna do this moving forward, we need it built into the calendar, so people know where it is, so they can plan their life, right? And so we put them in the calendar, we've changed how it shows up there, so that it makes sense, folks are still confused about it, so I'm gonna show you the calendars here in a minute. But we finally, they're in the calendar, and they are SEL days. Students and faculty are still expected to do something on those days, but we ask that you get out in nature, if you remember me sending you a little video, get outside, enjoy your families, and then share what you did to take care of yourself on that day. So that has been in the calendar since then. So, and that is how we have been honoring the 182 days since then. So, on the e-learning days, asynchronous learning has to take place, students are supposed to be assigned enrichment assignments, or assignments they can work on, without your support, parents. So if it's too much, you should reach out to a teacher, it shouldn't be a lot. And the kids have two days after they return from the e-learning day, school days, not the weekend, if it's on a Friday, two days after they return to submit whatever assignment that was. So they have time, if they had a question, they were confused, they can wait until they get back, and they have two days to be given credit for it. So it shouldn't be anything strenuous, and teachers engage in professional development requirements that they would have to do anyway, but they, now they have that found time to get that done. Okay, so the next slide, I think I got everything on that one. So I talked about the SEL days, of you giving them back, and that was not reflected in the calendar originally, but now it is, and I'll show you where it was on the calendars. And then also, if additional closures happen, because we use the two days now, they're done, if we close after this now, the next day will be taken out of the three-day weekend from Memorial Day weekend, so the 24th of May, and then we start taking from spring break backwards, the Friday, the Thursday, the Wednesday. Now say, because we ought to stop calling it snow days now, folks, it could be any event, it could be a hurricane, a tornado, rain, the pump could blink at Timber Lane again, all these things are possibilities, right? Thank you for that, Tom Quinn. All these things are issues. Any closure after that, or say, spring break is already gone, they go on to the end of the school year, and then that moves graduation for our students, which we don't like, we don't want to do that, and that's why we try not to do that, if we can help it, because we know that people come from out of town, you plan your lives, and we got the date moving, so that's not good. So that's been the tradition since I've been here in Hopewell. Okay, so you want to go to the next one? So here are the calendars. This is the one that was, this is the calendar before we utilized the e-learning days, this is on the web, was on the website up until this morning. These orange days are the e-learning days. It says right here, "E-Learning," and there's a description down here of what that means. The snow day that I just told you about, the regular old snow day, the only thing we have left built in is right here in blue, "Snow Day." So if we use that, this is gonna drop off the calendar. So now we're gonna show you what the calendar now looks like, because we used those two e-learning days. This is the new calendar that we're gonna post, make sure it's everywhere, and I'm gonna send out with this slide deck. We used them here, so now they're gone in the spring break, and over here near the Memorial Day. Now, what if you've already booked your vacations, Erin? You're gonna go on your vacation, right? We understand that these happen, it happens, and this is how it is, it happens in other districts that don't have, and you're gonna take your days, and the attendance committees in each one of the schools will know that that happened on that day, no one's gonna get you or ding you for that. You're gonna take your vacations, because quite frankly, those weeks leading into the holidays, you all take your vacations, right? If you're looking at booking a flight to Europe or somewhere, and you can save $1,000 to take your whole family if you go on Wednesday instead of Thursday, you all are going on Wednesday. So the teachers try not to do a lot of new things on that week leading into a break, because they know kids are in or out. We'll take care of it, and we'll make sure you catch you up, and you'll be fine, and we'll also work with teachers that have made plans, to make sure that we take care of everyone. So these things happen, and we try to remain flexible, but that's what it looks like in the calendar. We cannot change any of the 185-day setup now. It's part of a contract that would have to be talked about when we negotiate the teacher's contract, which is in a year, and they would have to agree to it, and the board would have to agree to it, to come to a consensus that we will do less. I wouldn't recommend you all do less, because what you're doing in this district is, was before its time, and other districts now, even across the bridge, have started doing what we're doing. So to go backwards doesn't make sense. How we communicate it, it has to be better if we're still confused. So what I will do after tonight is, I'm gonna share this slide deck, I'm going to take the video that was recorded tonight and shave it down to just this explanation, and send this out to folks with the new calendars, and I'll try to do my best to continue to communicate with you, but I can't promise we won't have other days. If I'm worried that you're not gonna be safe, your kids are not gonna be safe on these huge buses, that my drivers are not gonna be safe, that my staff commuting here from all over as far up to North Jersey is not gonna be safe, I'm probably gonna err on the side of closing schools, which you saw most of us, all of us did, I think, in Mercer County. I wasn't gonna risk that for a half-day with your kids driving and my bus is out there, I just wasn't, because you have these rural, little, narrow roads that are treacherous on a good day, and I didn't want that for you. And know that when I make this decision, I'm online and on the phone and on Zooms all night with my facilities folks, with transportation, and our first responders, and our borough people, and our mayors. When are you gonna be able to salt, what's the road conditions like? They're telling me there's five cars off the road right now. I'm listening to all that when I'm making the decision, and I want to make sure that your kids are safe. And I'd rather you be mad at me for me to call it, and I didn't need it, than me to have somebody out there at risk. So I hope that answers all your questions, and please, if you have any other questions, please feel free to reach out to me, and I think I have that on my last slide, my email address and my direct extension, if you ever have a question about any of it, please do give me a call. And then finally, I think I just have something on the strategic planning, because Ms. Smith is gonna go through all the calendar changes for the next three years, or the calendars for the next three years. February 6th will be our first session, because we had to close because of the snow day on Tuesday or the e-learning day. So this first session will be on the 6th, all are welcome, even if you didn't RSVP the first time, I will have Dr. Plitz to send it out again, just in case you were able to free up your calendar and you were able to come. Everyone is invited, you don't have to have kids in the district, so whoever wants to come can come, and even if your kids are getting ready to And even if your kids are getting ready to graduate, you have something to say as well. So please, I would love to have you to participate as well. It's really going to set the stage for how the district moves forward and our plans for the next five years out. And there's my contact information. If you have any questions about any of that, please feel free to reach out to me. Does the board have any questions?
I have just one question. I just, I really appreciate you sort of laying out the explanation behind the e-learning days. I think that was incredibly helpful to see it in that way. I think some of the feedback that I've been hearing is around the volume of work, and you mentioned that a little bit, sort of what the guidance is. But I'm wondering if you could just talk a little bit more about what guidance the teachers at different levels are getting around how much work and what type of work the students should be getting on e-learning days?
They're getting the same thing that I just told you, and I asked the principals to remind the staff of that. And again, if it's too much, please just have your child stop, reach out to the teacher. And then again, they don't have to turn anything in until a couple of days after. But I know Ms. Riley had a conversation today with her folks. I'm putting a reminder out to the faculty as well. It really should be enrichment and something that's not, you know, crazy, you know, assignment that they have to do that they wouldn't have to do otherwise. So hopefully, that's not widespread. I know AP and honors gets rigorous, but you know, but we have to have that reminder. So thank you for asking that again.
Okay. So our new... There we go. Oh, much better. So next we have, January is School Board Recognition Month. And so we have a resolution to acknowledge January as School Board Recognition Month, to acknowledge the service of all the school boards, including ours, throughout the state of New Jersey. We have over 5,000 people that work with school boards and our school board members in New Jersey's public schools, and they help to ensure the high-quality education that we have come to know here in New Jersey and especially here in Hopewell. And so I would just like a motion to approve this resolution into the minutes. All those in favor? Anyone opposed or objecting? The resolution is moved. Next, we have a budget discussion. Take it away, Bob.
Okay. This is going to be just a preliminary budget discussion with some of the dates that the board is going to be looking at things and a lot of the slides we've seen before, but we're just getting the process started. So again, as I said before, we always start everything with a mission statement, and we have our new mission statement that we're now working from. And again, just a reminder that everything we do revolves with the mission statement. So this is what we're going to be working for this spring. Over the fall, we did have three budget presentations. We talked about CNI, special education and facilities. Those are among our three largest budget drivers. At this point, we're meeting with all of our budget managers, from the curriculum folks to the special ed folks, facilities, transportation, the principals and their budgets, technology, any and all cost owners. Now, we're having discussions with those budget managers to see what they need and also what they want. There's difference, needs and wants, to go forward with next year. Over that time, we'll see how it fits in with the state budget cap and whether we need to make any cuts, how much surplus we're going to use, and we'll get into that in a minute. February 20th, we were going to do this on February 5th, but I am speaking with the Finance Facilities Committee last week. The superintendent and her cabinet and her administrative team want some more time to just kind of run through these items that we're looking at. We don't have state aid information. We won't have it until the 29th of February, but we wanted to get a budget discussion in sometime in February so we could give the board kind of an update of where we are and what we've done to get to that point in time. After we receive state aid, we'll have a subsequent budget session on March 4th if we need it to discuss, you know, anything catastrophic loss of state aid, increase in state aid, those kinds of things. Then March 18th, that'll be our formal adoption of the budget to be submitted to the county superintendent on March 20th. There'll be a back and forth with those folks over there to see if they are going to require any changes. We've been lucky, they have not. They've been receptive to our budgets and have not given us a whole lot of corrections over the years. And then from March 20th area to the public hearing, the board will have opportunities and the public will have opportunities to make any further comments. We can make changes at the public hearing. Historically, we do not make changes at the public hearing, but there is the opportunity to make those. So it kind of lays out the next three or four months of work that the board is going to be doing, looking at the budget. So again, just where we are, we're about 3,400 students in holding. We've been holding there for the past two to three years. I'll show you a slide in a minute to show you the trend that's going forward. We transport over 2,500 students a day, support eight buildings, almost 450 teachers, 267 additional staff members, 25 administrators. And we are an I district factor group. They run from A to J. J is the most wealthy. We're in the second category below that. So we are considered a very affluent district by the state of New Jersey. What makes us unique? Dr. Treese talked about that we tend to do things a little bit different than some other folks with 182 instructional days, but we maintain small schools and small class sizes as much as we can. We have an extraordinary number of programs and support services for our students with a highly experienced teaching staff that stays with us. We don't have a transient staff. We've offered over the years many, many SEL and mental health supports up and throughout all the levels of our instruction, not only for our students but also for our staff. And we have, again, programs that exceed state minimums from the arts and sciences to the languages to athletics and so many other services. We are still one of the only comprehensive, few comprehensive high schools left in New Jersey, which means that we still maintain a lot of the practical arts programs, auto shop, wood shop. We have science and technology things. We have robotics, all of those things that make us what is known as a comprehensive high school. Some of the things that we value, again, we've talked about this before, but providing as much opportunity for our staff and students as we possibly can from the professional development, co-curricular and sports activities, theater, arts, all of those kinds of things that we provide, countless professional development for our staff, going out and learning things to bring back to the students. As a district, we value long-term planning. We are constantly looking at our academic program and making changes either as directed by ourselves when we think we need to do something better or by the state when they think that they know what is best for us. We also, again, planning for staff. We try to look outward of what kind of staff members we're going to need as we move through different curricular areas and growth or lack of growth in a district. And something that Dr. Treese mentioned in her talk before, we're trying and working to provide better and more consistent messaging. It's very important is to making sure people understand what we're trying to do. Again, just a graphical representation of what we do from educating students who are going on to colleges, but also looking at the practical arts programs, folks who are going to go into the trades, folks who may want to go into the arts, and all the different kinds of students that we work through here. I think that picture over there is our, Paula, is that your group over there in that far-right corner? Their transitions group. So all kinds of kids and all kinds of learners, we try to support them here in Hopewell. We do a lot of things out there to see how the community is looking at us, both from climate surveys, graduate focus groups, which I think we just completed our first one, Dan Stefano did this past year. Again, our curriculum, we look at college acceptance, acceptances, test scores, any number of the online, the niche categories and those kinds of things we look at. While they're not all encompassing, we do like to see how we are rated by those. So we don't just look at one area. We're looking at a lot of different ways to measure the success that we've brought to the valley. Again, I'm not going to read through all these, but there's any number of honors and achievements that the district has scored over the past several years. So getting into the priorities that we're looking at, it doesn't much change from year to year, but we do want what goes into our budget to reflect our values. We don't want to lose any of the programs and services that we've added. We've always said that once a program comes to Hopewell, it never leaves because we brought it in there for a reason, and we want to keep it. We do value the rigorous academic program. We have students who, I think minimally, they have to take five academic periods, but many of them take six in their course of studies. We're going to continue to look at our curriculum and make sure that we're improving the content. Again, class sizes, we talked about. We have salary and contractual obligations with not only our unionized employees but also our non-represented employees as well to keep their salaries and benefits commensurate with what their experiences are. We're going to continue to evaluate all of our programs from technology to transportation and look at ways to reduce when we can, but also to expand when we can. And preparing a budget that prepares us for an uncertain future, as Dr. Treese mentioned, we no longer talk only about snow days. We talk about hurricane days and rain day. We had a, almost had a rain day a few weeks ago where we had a delayed opening because of the torrential rains that we had and the flooding that it caused in the valley. So we're looking at, you know, even maintaining our buildings for that. We just did a major project over at the high school to prevent against the 100-year flood. We thought we had done it. We lost a black box there in the gym, and we looked at to make changes to that area so that we don't have that same kind of catastrophe happen again. So what's driving costs this year? We put inflation at the very top because that's driving everybody. Everybody sees it. They see it in the grocery store, going, trying to buy a car, going on vacation. Anywhere you look, the prices are higher than you've probably ever seen them. That's affecting us in many different ways, not only supplies, but also service providers that we're using and energy, all of our energy from electric, gas, water, sewer. All of those things are driving our budget. The same things that we used to get are now costing 10, 15, 20% more than they used to. Transportation, that line item is largely statutory. There's very little flexibility within that budget, but that transportation, bus renewals are driven on the Consumer Price Index as defined by the state. There's no flexibility there. Right now, the transportation CPI is looking at somewhere between 8 and 9%. They haven't set a final number yet, but 8, 9% right off the bat. Nothing we can do about those. Insurance, both the health insurance market and the property and casualty market, in addition to workers' comp, are all increasing in the 15% to 20% range. And we'll talk a little bit about that more going forward. But some things that we can't, that we try to control, say, our workers' comp rates. We've been having even accidents. If a person has an accident that may not be the cause of the disaster, you think of workers' comp, you think negligence. They're not looking. The laws have become very liberal regarding that. If somebody falls and gets hurt in your buildings, it's your fault regardless of whether they trip on a shoelace that was untied or a wet floor. It's still treated the same way. And the rates for workers' comp have gone up from $250,000 five years ago to over $750,000 for that insurance that we are required to carry. So again, things like that are driving our budget. Unanticipated facility maintenance costs have been a huge budget driver the last several years. Dr. Treese mentioned that in her speech, the well pump that went out. We did not anticipate a well pump going out like that the way it went out. And we're looking for, as we talk about in the referendum discussion later, adding secondary well pumps so that that doesn't happen again. Because we know that when people send their kids to school, they're sending them here, and they're at work. They need us to maintain those students while they're gone. Special education, largely driven by the tuition increases from the private schools that we deal with that are state mandated. We have a 2% cap. They do not. They do not. Ms. Donardo does what she can to bring students back to our district where we think that we educate them better and at a reduced cost. But again, special education tuition is driving increases to our budget. Staffing and contract settlements, we talked about that. We're trying to maintain and maintain employees with salaries and benefits commensurate to other districts so that they stay here. Curriculum instruction, we have many initiatives that we need to drive through to next year, additions to our reading program and our math programs, adding to the programs. Growth in Hopewell Township, we've all seen that in the papers where there is growth. We are seeing growth already. We are seeing students coming in from the areas over on Bull Run Road and on Scotch Road. Students are starting to come in. I mentioned a waiver for health benefit costs. We are seeing our health benefits rising. There is some relief within the budget for health benefit costs. We may need to use that to balance our budget coming forward. And also the utilization of surplus. How much surplus can we put into our budget comfortably? And what I mean by surplus is how much money from the current budget will we not spend and push into next year's budget? Or how much money from our savings? We have a fund balance that we are allowed to keep 2% of budgeted expenditures in a surplus account. Do we dip beneath that? And that's something, those are the things that the board is going to be discussing. So this is kind of an interesting slide. You can see in the last five years, our first grade population has wound up between 230 and 235 students on average. This year, we've jumped up to 272 students in first grade. So we're starting to see a movement of students into first grade, which obviously will drive. We do get a pickup, an increase of students from kindergarten. You have a lot of students who go to private kindergartens and then come to public school. We're starting to see more students entering first grade than we've had in over 10 years. So that's going to drive it. Our population, it dropped a little bit this year due to a high, lower graduating class, but we are seeing that level off, and we should start seeing our population enrollment increase over the next five to 10 years. So we've kind of hit that bottom area, and we're going to start to grow. And just a basis of where our money, this is last year's budget. You can see, starting from the top of the chart with athletics and down to that lower left-hand part, more than almost two-thirds of our budget goes to, directly to the students' educations. The remainder of that are the benefits related to that staff, so almost 75% of that budget is going to educate students because our students are educated by teachers, and we're a very human-oriented basis. That's where our money goes, into human resources. The remainder of the quarter budget goes into our debt service payment, which is our mortgage that we have. The only mortgage we have left is on the most recent referendum and other district services such as transportation and facility maintenance. Folks like to know where the monies come from our budget. 92% of the budget is funded with local funding. 86% of that is taxes and other monies. 5% is some surplus, and then the remainder is miscellaneous revenues that we generate. We do bring in a few students each year and charge tuition. There is a transportation fee that certain members have to pay in the community. And we also charge rent to use our facilities, my folks, but that's only 1% of our total budget. Now, the property tax values have, the property tax amount that we've used has dropped. It's gone some more to surplus, which in one way or another, you could tie back. It's property taxes that were unused and carried forward. So again, the large portion of our budget is funded by local funding. We get very little money from the state. It's actually less than 1%, but it rounds up to 1%. But the state has increased its funding. A few years ago, we were probably down into the 4.5% range from state funding, so we have seen some monies come back from the state. This is the last year of the S2 law where funding was being taken from some districts and given to other districts. We've been a getter, so we've received state aid over the past four years. We should receive some additional state aid this year, but they don't, they don't hint, even hint at it. There's, you don't know what you're getting until it comes out on February 29th. So I'm anticipating that funding will maintain. So I'm anticipating that funding will maintain in this, these same percentages for the 2024-25 And just, you know, so we can talk about a little bit of the things that we've done to control costs. I did mention health benefits was a huge driver in our budget, but we have made efforts to contain it by being a self-insured program. We do not pay premiums to a carrier who keeps them if you don't use it, we collect and pay out what we need, and anything that is not spent comes back to us to use to keep costs down in subsequent years. So that is, that is still working well for us, we are well below what we would be paying if we were in a fully insured program or even the state health benefits program, we're doing much better than those organizations. Again, special education, Ms. Donardo's done a great job in finding less expensive placements, but better instructionally, because they are in their home school here, and we can, we'll continue to do that as space provides and as she can generate programs to handle the different types of students that we have. We've done our best to reduce staff and administration based on enrollment, we don't just keep staff members the way they are and find things for them to do, we have reduced when we have been able to. We may be at the end of that area, I don't see any reductions, maybe one at the elementary level, where we have sections that can be reduced. We do start, we are seeing students come in both to our elementary, middle school, and high school at all levels right now, so we're going to maintain a keen eye on our enrollment report. We do participate in a school choice program, where we receive about 20 students at about a $13,000 a student clip, that helps to offset our budget, that money goes directly into our budget, and we take those students in from those other districts. So it has helped to the tune of about $300,000 over the past five to six years of money that we didn't have to fund for ourselves. Technology, we continue to find ways, as technology grows, we have a very forward-thinking technology staff who finds ways to reduce costs when we can, and even in a one-to-one environment. We've moved to less expensive platforms, we used to have a lot of Macintosh and Apple devices, we've moved them out and moved to a Google environment, where a lot of the software comes with the devices and is free to the user. And virtual, servers and storage have always been a huge issue, and we're working on more virtualization to reduce the amount of actual equipment that we have to purchase. We do a lot of cooperative purchasing, which means that we are with consortiums who bid out large amounts of items for us to use, both school supplies, office supplies, construction and building supplies, all to reduce the cost to the taxpayer there by having these things all professionally bid. And we have choices where we can use different co-ops that have different prices going forward. And these, again, encompasses all things from energy to our phone services, supplies, equipment, and technical professional services, we try to use co-ops as much as we can. And again, facilities, I wanted to single out that department. We do have, we have been installing higher efficiency equipment over the years, and we have seen a reduction in our energy uses, or at least energy uses that's flattened out, because we've been able to install higher-end efficiency models, but we've also been able to do a lot of the repairs in-house. Mr. Quinn has talked at meetings before where, you know, we've got a quote to have, I'm going to say, an HRU unit installed on top of a roof, and we get a quote for $15,000 or $20,000 for a contractor to come out and do it, and we can do that for less than half the price, because our guys purchased the equipment and can do the installations themselves. So that's been, you know, that department has really helped to keep his costs flat. We're looking at a facilities budget that's been basically flat now for the past 15 years. So that helps control. That's the end of it right now, we don't have hard numbers right now, we're still working out the nuts and bolts of it, and we'll be delivering hard numbers to you later on this winter. At this point, are there any questions from the board on budget? I mean, I can, off the top of my head, we looked at that this afternoon, first grade class's sizes are looking anywhere between 19 and 21.
That's right now.
Right, with that. Oh, yeah, we'd have to pull that up, yeah. So historically where they were. We haven't, we've pretty much been in that same rail, we can pull that up, no problem, but they've been, we very seldom have class sizes higher than 22, 23, in any level.
Right, and the reason I'm bringing it up is that...
Mm-hmm.
... Obviously, it's not necessarily been the town, one of the people...
As the, as the house has become built, we're going to have to, yeah. That's just the getting started, you know, letting you know where we are and what we're going to be doing, and then we'll be back with you in February to discuss, you know, where we are and the things that we're looking at, either adding or removing as we go forward. So, stay tuned. And I promise, we won't show the same slides again, it'll be different next time. All right, I'm going to call Tom and George up to the front, we're going to have a second pass at our referendum discussion. Okay, so we're going to get started, this is a reprisal of the, essentially a reprisal of the program that we did back in November, there's some tweaks to it based upon some feedback that we got from the board and the community, for a referendum that we are planning on. Why is this not working? See if I can call up the original document. Okay, we're going to talk about where we are today, talk about the process that we're going through, the projects that we're looking at, and the priorities, and how we came to those, a summary of the costs, an expected tax impact, and then where the board needs to move going forward.
So, is this working? Oh, there it goes. Where we are today, thank you Bob. So where are we today? Well, for some of you who have been at the earlier meetings, we're planning a referendum for September of 2024. There was a presentation that was made at the November meeting, as Bob alluded to earlier, we talked about much of this at that time. There was a referendum already held in 2015, as some of you may remember, but there are still needs that the district has in terms of facilities, and some other things have cropped up even since that time.
And George, I'm going to introduce you for a second there, just for those who don't know, this is George Duthy, he's the principal architect on the project, and Tom Quinn was working with us as well, he's our director of facilities.
Sorry about that, that was my fault. For the, most of the projects you're going to see later on, the state will contribute towards that cost, as they did in the last referendum, and we'll get into those details a little bit later in the presentation. We're going to talk about the projects, the anticipated costs, the estimated tax impact, and the timelines that are involved. And then we're going to also talk about some of the process, what we have to go through in order to be able to submit this project in for referendum approval by the state, and then conduct that referendum vote. So we have categories of projects, building integrity, things like roofing, right, roof leaks, addressing old roofs, which creates an opportunity for additional solar in the district, by the way. Indoor environmental quality, HVAC, ventilation, there is still equipment and systems in the buildings that need to be addressed, and Tom and I will talk about that a little bit later on. Safety and security, we have projects like a new fire alarm system at Stony Brook Elementary School, and electrical service at Tollgate Elementary School, which is one of those projects that has come to light since the last referendum was done. Space for the students, program enhancements, we'll talk about those, some increasing enrollments, and a pre-K expansion initiative in the district. And we will talk about what that means, and some limited site improvements, we'll also discuss those. All right. So why are we doing this? Project's not done in the last referendum, needs identified by the district, larger projects that are too expensive to fund through the district's normal budget and savings account, the state will contribute to paying for the projects, delaying the projects, just going to kick the can down the road, potentially make things worse. We want to get the students out of the modular buildings over at Tollgate and Bear Tavern. We want to improve services to children with disabilities, and this builds upon the district's strategic plan, which was discussed earlier, and so this is sort of moving in a direction of improving those services for the kids, right? That's really what all these projects are about, whether it's approving a system or improving a program, that's what these projects are for, for the kids. Pre-K and K expansion based upon enrollments and other improvements, okay?
And you may say, what were the projects that we didn't do in the last referendum? We've talked about this with many folks before, but the last referendum, the initial estimate for projects was over 60 million, the board at that time decided to cut that almost in half and only do 35 million at that time, but those $30 million worth of projects didn't go anywhere, they stayed there, and those are, they were the start, they were the basis for the new referendum, the problem was, they didn't cost $30 million anymore, they almost doubled in cost in that time period.
So an important point, the district does ongoing facilities maintenance, I know Tom is going to have to tell you about some of the things that the district does with their in-house crews and their in-house resources, but the district is expending those funds, they make emergency repairs and emergent repairs, and as you can imagine, with all the buildings, those things come up on a fairly frequent basis. But the larger projects, again, cannot be covered by the district's budget. So we're going to talk to you about some of the projects that the district has done in-house with their own crews and with their own resources.
So we replaced HVAC equipment throughout the district as it fails or is starting to fail, heating line and water line replacements at the admin building, this past year, we had a three-inch line break in the crawl space of the administrative building, and then we had another line break within the wall of the, between the stairwell and the restrooms, so we had to repipe all of that. Various sanitary line problems that are continuously going on, I feel we snake more lines than anybody does. We've done a lot of electrical service upgrades for, where we moved in Timberlane when we changed lunches to just the one lunch group, so we had to put a second satellite kitchen service in for a serving line. So our electricians did all that work, saving us a lot of money. And then we also have had to remove a lot of dead trees, with ash trees that have died, we've had to do a lot of tree removal, and then also where trees were planted in courtyards merely a foot from the wall of the building, and they can grow to 160 feet, we have to take those out. And most of those we, that are like that, we did ourselves, so that we'd also hire out for some of the major ones.
And we also, on the left side of this slide, we have, you may ask, why is, why is the district delay so much of the maintenance that they did? Well, we did a lot of work as it came up, but focus changed, there was a time period back where we felt that emergency generators and security vestibules were very much more important at that time, we pushed those to the top of the list and pushed off some of the HVAC equipment and roof work. We had tons of paving and sidewalks, and we still have more that's going to be in this referendum, almost $2.2 million worth of paving that we needed to get done. The windows in this building had rotted through and they needed to be replaced. We did two boiler replacements, we had Timberlane, Bear Tavern, and Hopewell Elementary School to almost the tune of $3 million. So there's been a lot of money put towards capital maintenance, and the only way to get money for capital maintenance outside of a referendum is through savings that is generated through not spending appropriated funds. There's no money in our general budget to put towards cap, big capital maintenance, because it would take away from the educational program.
And as we're planning capital projects, we discuss with finance facilities each month the different things that have come up and what is in most need. And we got to a point where we only had so much money left to deal with, and we start kicking projects and saying, well, how far can we push this one? The Hopewell Elementary boilers was pushed almost too far. If it had been a cold winter last year, we would have never been able to heat the building and keep it open. The couple days that we had that were actually very cold, we had no heat at all on the top floor of the building. So, we, that project was kicked too long, unfortunately, we got it up and running for the start of school this year.
Okay. And believe it or not, the projects that we're putting into this referendum doesn't encompass everything that we need to do, we do have a modest capital reserve and somewhere in the area of $7 million, but that is going, that is, that's difficult, that's for projects that become an emergency later on. And we do want to keep money in reserve in case those projects that are maybe a little few years out, not writing right now for replacement, that we have money set aside for those as they come due.
I wanted to mention that the capital project planning process is always underway here in Hopewell Valley, and we are constantly, you know, with Tom and district facilities and Bob and the staff, looking at projects, moving projects into a five-year capital projects plan, and reevaluating the priorities every single year, and adjusting the costs. So this is an ongoing process that the district does continuously, not just once a year.
Right, and the members of my finance committee through by nodding can say, you know, that we've done that with them for the past, there they go, have done that with them on a continual basis for probably the last 10 years, going through, you know, letting them know what is going on and how they're being planned to be fixed.
So, projects, projects and priorities, okay Bob, Central High School, just going to go over the projects that are planned in the referendum, this information is going to be available along with the referendum publicity information, but at the high school, roof replacement of remaining roof areas, we still have HVAC to do, in particular, the 400 wing, the science wing, that HVAC equipment is obsolete, and improvements can be made, some pieces of it are failing, that's right, and parts are hard to come by. We have a plan to do a concession stand restroom building to make the football stadium athletic complex barrier-free accessible, and to have better serviceability by creating those facilities, the concession stand and the restrooms, so.
Some folks might recall that the, these areas down in blue in the lower right, we used to call that the new gym, and the new gym is now over 20 plus years old now, so the roof, the original roof there is now needed to be replaced, but you know, we still have called it the new gym for the past several years.
A lot of work was done on Central High School in the last referendum, as you all probably know. So Timberlane, again, roofing, there are selected areas, you can see them here, indoor environmental improvements, most of that is to take care of the... Indoor environmental improvements, most of that is to take care of the larger classroom wing in the back and replace that HVAC equipment, which right now is obsolete, really not functioning well, again, being repaired by district's in-house staff on a regular basis to keep it operational. And then we're going to add air conditioning to the aux gym, which is the only gym, the only space really, in the district that doesn't have air conditioning right now. We're going to do some improvements to the site. We're going to improve the main entrance to Timberlane, going to aesthetically improve that, make that more serviceable. And the synthetic turf field at AFT.
Yeah, the entrance there at Timberlane, if you see that picture on the far right, that tower, the bricks are actually falling off of that. Got up there in a lift and pulled off the ones that were loose, trying to prevent a tragedy or anything, but it's something that needs to be addressed. And as you can see on the middle picture, there's pavers and concrete, and they've deteriorated to the point where it is a constant tripping hazard. And as Bob was talking about before with insurance costs and everything, it costs more for a claim than it does actually repair these things. That's why we want to get these in the referendum.
So Bear Tavern, again, roofing projects, HVAC systems in various areas of the building, particularly the larger course spaces, that equipment is obsolete. We're going to replace classroom doors in the main classroom pods of Bear Tavern Elementary School with security glazing, security locks. We're going to construct an addition at Bear Tavern School, 10 classrooms, pre-K classrooms. We're going to relocate all of the services and the kids that are located in the modulators right now, in the modular buildings, into this new addition, including a very robust special services department for the kids, for the kids with special needs, okay? So that's going to be moved into the new addition of Bear Tavern, much more accessible, closer to those classrooms, closer to those kids who need those services. We're going to prepare that building to receive a future second floor. That's correct. Yes. Yes, yes. Looking out beyond, yeah, it's hard to look beyond five years, but based on what we're seeing, you're right, right. That's correct. We're trying to plan smart, yeah.
We expect the most influx of students into the Bear Tavern zone.
Right. Okay, and then some other SOAR, again, infrastructure improvements, the SOAR pumping station, for example, and we're going to improve the staff entrance to the building as well. So this is the Bear Tavern addition. You can see it's going to be added to the back of the building where it's going to be attached, and you can see the modular buildings, they're going to remain in place. Work was done on those. They are serviceable, and so they will be used for district offices, non-student-facing departments and storage, okay?
The other reason why we're keeping them, as George mentioned, we have done some considerable work on them so that they are viable buildings, but it's also going to give us the opportunity to stage the work where we won't have to transfer those students elsewhere while the new wing is being built. Those students will be able to stay in those spaces until the new spaces are ready.
And this is just a schematic drawing of what the new addition on Bear Tavern proposed to look like. And you can see some of the layouts, some flexibility in some of the rooms. We've added some space, some faculty toilets, gender-neutral facilities and things like that have been added into this addition as well. And two classrooms down the end, shown optional, are actually going to be included in the plan. So we are going to add those classrooms at this time. We do think there would be a need to have those. So they're included in the costs that I'm going to show you. Oh, just the functions. Those are just key, different colors for different functions, yep. The pre-K rooms, the CST spaces, the faculty offices, and the support spaces. Okay, Bob. So Hopewell Elementary School, here again, we have some moving work, replacement of exterior doors, which is also a project that's contemplated at Bear Tavern Elementary School as well. Again, HVAC, this is the completion of the HVAC project that's been started already at Hopewell Elementary School. Removal of the old steam boilers, replacement with hot water boilers. We're going to convert the building to hot water, the remaining portions of the building to hot water. She'll increase energy efficiency. Security projects as well, classroom doors again, and we're going to take two of the existing kindergarten rooms, which have non-ADA compliant toilet rooms, and make those ADA compliant.
And with the door replacements, a lot of the doors are original to the building itself. So in the older part, the doors are a good 50, 60 years old. In the primary wing, they're pretty close to 50 years old. They're not fire doors or fire-rated. And the exterior door replacements are where the doors have deteriorated and they swell and when the sun hits them, and then they don't close properly, and that creates a security issue.
Stony Brook Elementary School, some roofing again. You can see, again, exterior door replacements. Those doors, believe it or not, are also at the end of their life. Cafeteria HVAC equipment. We're going to add a chiller to compensate for subdegradation in the geothermal system that is at that school, believe it or not. Those wells are now over 20 years old, and they do degrade over time. Going to correct a slight drainage issue over there. And those are the projects really placed for Stony Brook. It doesn't need a whole lot of work, but it does need some attention. So Stony Brook will also have some work done. Tollgate is next. That's an example of a project the district is going to support with the local funds because of concerns of the condition of the fire alarm system. Tollgate Elementary School, again, roofing, exterior doors. We're also looking at HVAC improvements here on the third floor of the old building to improve ventilation and air conditioning and heat there. Replacement of electrical switch gear to service the whole building. At the same time, enlarge that because we're going to be building an addition on the school as well with six pre-K classrooms. We're going to demolish the modular buildings that are on the side. We're going to expand that parking lot, provide more parking, head-in parking, and better access around the site, okay? So those are the plans for Tollgate. Yes. Yes. Sure. Yes, yes. Very narrow. Yep. Yep. So that's a great point. We are going to make, we will completely connect around the building, which will allow access for emergency vehicles completely around the addition, which is ideal, and eliminating that choke point you have when you try to turn off that front driveway into that side parking lot. We're going to widen that and make that much better. Moving those modulators will give us that opportunity to do that. So this is the addition proposed for Tollgate, smaller than the one at Bear Tavern, but again, you can see the pre-K rooms in there, again, smaller bathrooms, we're adding some bathrooms to Tollgate. There is a lack of small individual toilet rooms at Tollgate. We're going to add some of those, and we're going to add also a faculty workroom at Tollgate Elementary School as well, okay? In this area of the building and repurpose the existing faculty workroom. So, how much is it all going to cost? Bottom line, $87.5 million. I always say that first. But you can see the breakdown by school. You can see the rehabilitation projects, okay, which are the non-new construction projects, not the additions. And you can see the bulk of the work is rehabilitation projects, and then you can see in the right column, the cost, anticipated cost of the new construction. Now, these numbers are pretty solid. There's still one more step in completing this process. We have to fill out all the cost estimate forms for the Department of Education. That will determine the final, final amount. It should be very, very close to this number, okay?
George, so tell why, why did you keep the parts for them, the second column, the addition renovation project?
Great question, Bob. I was actually going to get that in the next slide, but, okay, actually, go back just for a second. So in that left-hand column, rehabilitation projects, what are they? They're projects that the state will pay up to 40% for if they're eligible, and most of the rehabilitation projects are eligible. On the next slide, I'll show you what we're expecting to be eligible for state support. Now, for new construction, okay, the addition portions, the new construction, the formula is different. The state still pays 40%, but they pay 40% of a prefixed, believe it or not, $143 a square foot. So new construction now pushing $600 a square foot, even $700 a square foot. It's a very small number, usually comes to about 10% of the project or so. I'm going to show you that calculation when we get to the next page, okay? Very little, I think very little of this project will be supported by the funding from new construction for the district because you have to have what are called unhoused students, which are students that cannot be housed in the building under its existing capacities, okay? Moving on. Here are the numbers, estimated numbers, again, grand total, all projects, $87,500,000. And just overall, we expect about $57,750,000, $57,750,000 to be eligible, about 66% of the overall costs. We expect the state, therefore, will pay overall, and again, this includes, you know, what I was saying about the new construction not really getting much of a contribution, so $23 million. So about 26% of the project cost will be paid for by the state, which is actually better than I thought it was going to be, so it's good. So 74% of that, 64.5 million, will be what we call local share, the portion that the district has to pay on its own.
And just to be clear, the state doesn't give you the money upfront. They give it to you over the life of the bond. So if we bond the full $87.5 million, we will get a bond payment. They will pay us a portion of each year's bond payment.
So it's called debt service aid, and you saw that actually on the budget, and that is the amount of money the state contributes towards debt service aid every year in the budget. It's a part of the budget process. So the exact eligible costs are going to be determined by the Department of Education. We won't really know that until we receive the approvals from the state. Then we'll know what the state will deem to be eligible, and we'll have those final numbers. It's an estimation, okay? Best guess. More details to follow. We expect the tax impact. I guess his number's still right, Bob, between $500 and $575 a year per household.
With the average household being $500,000.
Right. Assess value, $500,000. That number will be further refined, more work to do with the financial people on that once we finalize the numbers that go into the state. The tax impact is based on a 20-year bond. It will vary by municipality, and it assumes that home values remain stable, okay? And average home values vary by town, depending on which town is sending to Hopewell Valley, and interest rates remain stable.
So we're hoping for, is by the time we actually go out to bond the money, the interest rates will drop from where they are now.
Right. Actually, we should pull a 5. We had expected 20%, it's actually 26%. So I think we definitely did better on the estimated state share based on our projections. So going forward, next steps, we have to finalize the referendum and submit everything to the Department of Education. That will be done around February, sometime in February, we'll have those submissions made. We'll get our DOE approval in June or July of this year, and then the Board of Education will vote on approving those projects. And then we have to notify the clerk of elections. There will be, of course, an engagement and publicity effort that will be taking place to support the project, so there's going to be a lot more information coming later on. And then conduct that referendum on September 24th, September 24, 2024. And you can see below the timeline of all of the key events.
So as you can see, it is a very long and drawn-out process by the state. The state requires a lot of forethought and planning and early submission to make their deadlines.
Yep. A lot of work goes into it.
Which are basically statutory.
Okay, I think that's it. So more to follow. Thank you.
From the board? I have a quick question. I'm not sure who can answer this. The students in our modular buildings currently in Bear Tavern and Tollgate, what classes do we have scheduled in there?
Go ahead.
Hi. So at Bear Tavern, we have preschool classrooms. So we have preschool disabilities class, which is two full-day programs for just children in there with IEPs. And then we have general education, PEACH programs, three-year-olds in the morning, four-year-olds in the afternoon. We also have OT and PT services. We have a room and a trailer for that as well.
Thank you. Tollgate?
Tollgate, we have child study team office, and I believe we have no pre-Ks in the building. And we, oh, no, we do. We have a pre-K, so we have a PEACH class there, and we also have a resource room.
So first of all, I was on the finance committee all of last year. I'm the chair now for the community. I do want to say, when we went into this, we asked the administration to, well, we specifically asked Tom and Bob, and said, "Give us the things that will break." Not likely to break, not you think need to be fixed, but will break, and when they break, they will cause problems, and that's the largest chunk of it, right? And then there's additions that we knew we would have to make because of where the enrollments are going. So I'll have a couple of comments, but I don't want those to kind of model the fact that Nike, I mean, there are no bells and whistles here, and if there are any, they're very, very small. I don't know what's left idiomatically if you take the bells and whistles out, but that's what's there. That being said, a couple of questions about the presentation. So one thing we mentioned, compared to the original presentation, there were two projects taken out. One we mentioned was the Stony Brook fire alarm, and the other one is... Right. So those were planned, and we basically got to a point where we can't wait for this to go through and get bonded and get bonded, so we're bonding those out of capital reserves.
Yeah, it's timing. We had hoped that we could push those projects off to be part of the referendum. It's just not, the fire alarm needs to be taken care of, but we also, one of the other reasons we took the Central High School boilers out was we did get a grant for that project that's going to fund the same 40% that the referendum would have. So we're going to use our capital reserve money to fund those boilers, because as Tom was alluding to, they are starting to fail. There's a panel of boilers, they're smaller boilers, yeah, and they're starting to fail. So we figured, because we got a grant, we have some money in our capital reserve, we'll take that out and get it done sooner than later. Now, the state is, again, in their, whatever the way they do it, they've told us, they've given us the grant, but they haven't issued the contract yet. So we can't do anything until they give us the contract, which we think they're holding until they know that people can't do the work over the summer, and they can hold the money for another year and collect another round of interest on it. So we were hoping to be able to do it this summer. We may have to do it through next school year, during next school year.
So again, I was calculating, right, the projects that you said were already done, right? Those were done out of capital reserves, not out of the previous referendums. I ended up about eight and a half million, give or take, and with these projects, we would have outdone probably around $10 million of projects out of essentially annual budget because the capital reserves come out of that. So we are pressing up against what we need to do. Now, the one project they didn't seem mentioned in there, and I want to make sure that that's in the numbers, the TMS well.
Yes, TMS and Bear Tavern.
And Bear Tavern.
Yes.
And for the, and for the folks that don't have kids in middle school, do you want to explain why that suddenly came about?
What happened was our well pump suddenly stopped functioning on an afternoon, and we ran out of actual water in our storage tank even. We have a 5,000-gallon storage tank that was down to 1,000 gallons. We could not make it through the next school day, but we were able to, through a lot of phone calls and recommendations, connect with a well company that just happened to... to have a motor in stock that they could replace with that well. It took a little bit longer than we had anticipated because it was stuck coming out of the ground, but we got that, we got the motor back on, and within 24 hours had that well pump up and running. And then we have since, over the winter break, replaced the pump itself too, because both pieces needed it, but the motor was the part that had actually failed.
And if, and if the well company didn't have it in stock, what's the lead time?
It was about a week. Yeah.
So, so that, so I just wanted to kind of paint a picture, because the number, we took some projects out, the number has not changed drastically. My last comment, there was one project in TMS, which I do put into the bells and whistles category, and that's the turf field. And my recollection is the last time we talked about it, we kind of still had it on the list still to be discussed. I don't recall us ever coming back to it, either in committee or in meeting here. So I was a little surprised that it was on the list of things to be done.
I thought the only last time we just, nobody said anything about removing it, so we left it in.
Okay. So I have a different recollection. I, I'd like for us to still have a discussion as to whether this is something we want to do. I know it's not a lot of money, but on the other hand, it is a big referendum. I, I'd like to see us do, stick to the referendum being the things that need to be done.
Now, what we did add in here, and that's why the number didn't drop from the 87, is in addition to the Sister Wells pump, the gendered bathrooms and non-gendered bathrooms, and also the automatic door openers and some of the things.
That, and we're redoing some bathrooms that were not redone in the previous referendum, but desperately need to be. And if you have children in the middle school, you're well aware of the multiple issues that we continue to have there.
All right. I'm, I'm, I'm all done with comments.
Mark? No, you took, excuse me, you took a couple mine. I'm finding a little bit of a cough right now. Yeah, I think we should talk a little bit more about the turf field, but I do, I recollect the conversation to what you guys did, not yours, so we can, we should talk about that at some point. I have just a comment. He took two of my questions. I think just for the public, it's important to understand that, at least for me, you know, I, I ran to join the board because of fiscal-related items, and I think that we should be very confident that we've got a team sitting in the corner here that's going to be this transparent about this. I've said this in the past publicly, but this referendum process is going to be long. It's going to take a lot of discussion with the community. And one of the things that I personally have asked, that threw in the corner, is that we need to be completely transparent on this with everybody, so that everybody knows what we want to do. So for two reasons, in my opinion. One, we need to be able to share the full details, and more important, five years from now, when this does all come back to bite us, it's going to happen, that is going to happen, that we at least say, hey, five years ago, we had a plan, and you guys decided not to do it. I think, or, or decided to do it candidly. I'm not assuming anything here. I, I think the third thing that I would say is, as we're thinking about the budget this season, and, and not the referendum, one of the things that I would ask the community to consider is, as we're talking about transparency, and we're talking about the referendum being transparent, again, me being a year into this role, running for the fiscal reasons, I didn't know what I didn't know, and it's been amazing to see how much we actually don't control when it comes to spending. In the Finance Committee, we argue about a couple hundred thousand dollars here and there on a $100 billion budget. So I share that only to say, I would ask the community, let's not assume the worst when we're talking about the budget. Let's assume that we're all doing this for the right reasons, and I think if we take that attitude, kind of get through it together, right? So just wanted to share that. Kudos to you, Bob, Tom, and the team for just being transparent about this.
Yes. I want to thank the team as well, because, and I know that some board members have some more things to say, but what I do want to say is that, you know, when, when Bob and the Finance Committee, you know, started talking about this, and we decided that a referendum was probably the way we needed to go, listen, you know, at this point in my career, I could keep limping along with you all and play this game, but I'm going to feel bad if, when I leave this district, that list still looks like that. You know, this, this district shouldn't have schools where you have your little ones out in, in portable trailers. You shouldn't have that. So these are, you shouldn't have roofs, you shouldn't have windows falling out of, out of this, this building here. So I was hoping that we can at least get these things going, and, and if we do pass this referendum, and I'm hopeful we will, I won't even see the fruits of this, this labor, the labor that's going to come. But you're going to be set up and prepared for not just the future, but to keep this district, the district that wins awards and draws people to this community. And I would like to have that for you. So I want to thank them for all the work, and we'll continue to make our rounds. We're going to be going to probably township meetings. We'll go to each school. We're going to be meeting with the HVEF also. We're going to be going around doing this presentation and showing you in each specific building, the work that we've talked about here today. And we are taking your feedback, because we did add those things as well.
One last, one of my friendly questions I wanted to ask, again, to clarify, because we discussed this in the Finance Committee, I'm not sure if you did. The referendum is, should it pass, right, is a authorization to issue bonds, right? Those bonds only get issued when they're needed, as the work requires them, right? And should a different source of funding appear somewhere magically for some portion of this, then we would simply not need to issue that amount of bonds? And we don't have to bond all the money? Do we have to bond the entire amount over a certain amount of time?
A generous amount.
I would say, based upon what Alex and Mark both said, I think there was kind of a misunderstanding. I think we heard it in different ways, that maybe we have Mr. Becker come in February to discuss it, George, we have time for that, right? To make the final, that decision on that night. But there was, and perhaps the high school principal to talk about that particular project. It's, I don't know that I would consider it a complete bell and whistle thing. I think there is some basis for it and why he requested it being put in there, but I would rather have him come in and discuss his... Yeah. The guy, I mean, the, the basis was to bring the kids back from having to be shipped out to satellite practice sites because of that, and giving alternative places to play on site, on campus. So we can definitely have that discussion prior to making a final vote.
Just a quick clarification on the TMS turf field. Is there a cost estimate for it right now of the 26 million that's allocated for TMS?
So what it would do, just for your sake, it takes AFT 1 and 2. As you drive up the drive, it's the first two fields on the side, it'll turf that whole
And then, I'm sorry. And then what's the yearly upkeep, or what's the down-the-road cost?
To replace it in a turf field?
Yeah. Like how, so how long will it last? What do we have to do to it yearly to put in a new field?
10 to 12 years is typical on a, on a turf field. And as far as upkeep, it's just a matter of grooming, which is a few hundred dollars.
Any other? Okay. Thank you so much. That was really a great presentation and very informative. Okay. Any old business? No? So we are going to go to public comment on any items of interest. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by district administration. Alex will be our timekeeper. Just so everyone knows, when you see the yellow, it'll be a 30-second warning, and then red is stop.
Good evening. My name is Joanna Mora, and this is about like maybe the fourth Board of Education that I attend, so I wanted to say thank you to all of you and the more constant attendees, because this is a lot of time. I learn a lot, but I still have some questions. The main reason is, I remember last year when we, that was like maybe my third time attending, that we lost this STEM seats, and that was very dear to my heart. I'm a scientist, I work at Bristol Myers with. And so I came and spoke about that. And I was very surprised that day, because I thought, oh, I'm going to maybe say something that is going to sway the board, and you guys were ready, were ready to vote that day. So when I'm looking at all the dates that were shared by Mr. Colavita today, I had some questions about the granularity. I, I heard about a fiscal team, but in this sense of transparency, is there more details in terms of the budget that we would see? So if there's changes, like, oh, we're going to cut here, or we're going to add there, that we could come and speak to you about it, so that there's time to maybe change people's minds, or, or, or consider other things that could be done, instead of like, okay, I'm just sharing my comments and it's too late. So I heard a February date, but I don't know if this is like very granular sharing with the whole public, or if you could speak to that. And, and yeah, regarding that turf field, part of me was taking notes. I'm like, oh, my kid's not going to believe that there's plans for a turf field, because I know they, they had pizza with Mr. Turnbull, and that was one of the jokes, like, oh, we want a turf field. And I'm like, come on, like, can you ask for something more serious that he can actually do? So, so anyway, I'll pause in the, yeah, Mason, when would you share? Oh, I did have another question. Is there consider, is there a minimum number of students in a class to justify it, or would you consider, okay, well, there's only four kids in this advanced class, we'll cut that off the budget to allocate elsewhere?
And I'm sorry, I should have stopped you before, because I don't think you said your name and address. So the next person up. Oh, did you? Okay.
Should I just start? Hi, I'm Hannah Williams. I live at 217 Hale Street in Pennington. I need to pull up my email. I emailed the board members and you, Dr. Therese, on Saturday morning, and I'd like this to refocus a little bit to e-learning and the 182 days. I guess, thank you for your presentation and clarifying. Maybe I'm making this too deep, but I'm going to just read my email, because it has a few questions that I feel like maybe didn't get fully touched on, and then after your presentation, I thought of a couple more. I hope this fine, email finds you well. The Valley has been chirping and chattering about recent e-learning days and 182 days in the school year. I have two hard-working students in the district, a seventh grader at Timberlane, 11th grader at the high school. When Dr. Smith was superintendent, I protested loudly about e-learning days being introduced to the district. At the time, I was in the minority, and I obviously lost that battle back then. I have participated in calendar committee meetings when my daughters were younger. I definitely understand what a difficult task it was for the calendar committee to represent a diverse community of needs. I know tonight, and now after what you just said, Ms. Moyer, I'm wondering if that's, if this is even relevant, but I know that you're going to approve the calendars for the upcoming three years. I'm disheartened again when I saw them, to see the use of e-learning days to fulfill the district's 182 instructional school days of learning policy. My questions are as follow. Can you please clarify, explain why students need to be slated for 182 days instead of the 180-day state mandate? Because I guess Hopewell goes above and beyond, and therefore, I, I guess I'd like more to that answer. That didn't feel like a very great answer, other than Hopewell, we're a bunch of overachievers, maybe, and so we have to have our kids two extra days. They're also not recognized by the state, so to slip in that question, if they're not recognized by the state, why do our kids have to have work that then is being graded? I have an 11th grader, and she had plenty of work that is all being considered for grades. Otherwise, I would have happily have said to her, hey, don't do it. Although, I don't know if any of you have 11th graders, it's really hard to tell a junior not to do her work, especially when she's a rule follower. So that, that doesn't go over well anymore in my house. I understand teacher contracts of working days may differ from the students', so this doesn't seem like a valid explanation. Did the calendar committee and board consider slating March 28th and May 23rd, Days 181 and 182, as days off, unless there are school closures? Then these would become in-person learning days. If the board and committee did consider this, what was the rationale for keeping them as e-learning days? I've been overwhelmingly impressed with the district's digital wellness initiative, educational series about substance abuse, and supporting our students' mental health challenges, which is why I am not only confused, but also disappointed that the district talks as if they prioritize social and emotional health of the student body, yet when I see e-learning days built into a school calendar and two additional school days, it is a direct contradiction.
It's time.
Thank you. I also wanted to give a shout out to Ms. Pedron. I'm so happy to hear that you're...
Anyone else for comments?
My name is Mason Xiang. I live in 68 Stanford Road East, Pennington, New Jersey, and I'm a fifth grader at Stony Brook Elementary School. I would really like to bring back the STEM programs for Stony Brook, for all the elementary schools and the middle schools and high school. So I like, I, I used to enjoy many things in STEM, including the 3D printer project in third grade, when I, I was in third grade, and the cause eye dissection in fourth grade. The third grade project taught me how to like, use my imagination, and I got to see many things that I could create with my own imagination. In fourth grade, the cause eye dissection did help me with a lot of things. I learned how to describe many body parts of the eye, the parts of the eye, and it, it really helped me to like, know how it functions. And yeah. I would really like to bring back STEM for all of them, all of the, all of the schools in this district.
Hi, my name is Marcus Xiang. I live in 69 Stanford Road East. My brother Mason told me about cool things from... My brother Mason told me about cool things from STEM that were really interesting to me, and I was looking forward to a lot of them. And then when I heard that STEM was taken away, I was really disappointed. So I really want STEM back.
Good evening. While I appreciate the thorough PowerPoint presentation about e-learning days and--
And you introduced--
Oh, sorry, Kate Hamm, Pennington. While I appreciate the thorough PowerPoint presentation about e-learning days and snow days, which should now be denoted as school closure days, the disconnect still exists. I heard you state that the staff contract includes 185 days. To my knowledge, no one has asked to alter that number. The state of New Jersey requires students to attend 180 days of in-person learning, yet Hopewell policy or protocol dictates 182 days. Why the additional days? Is it because the plethora of half-days throughout the school year can't accommodate them? Can curriculum not be taught and requirements fulfilled on 180 days? Or is it because it's always been that way for many years? The idea of e-learning now looks very different than it did in 2016. The cost of groceries and bills has increased, the struggle to seek meaningful employment exists, the level of stress for each individual has increased some drastically. Staff, students, and families have endured a worldwide pandemic. The mental health of our youth is at a level of extreme concern and requiring urgent attention. Taken from an October 2023 Time article filled with research, this new world has taken a toll on U.S. teenagers if the staggering data on adolescent mental health has any indication. In 2020, 16% of U.S. kids ages 12 to 17 had anxiety, depression, or both, a roughly 33% increase since 2016, according to an analysis research group. The following year, so 2021, 42% of U.S. high school students said they felt persistently sad or hopeless. This is a concern. If staff are required to fulfill 185 days, is there a reason that the two built-in days cannot be utilized for staff to complete necessary PD while supporting the mental health of youth and families by not assigning work? Neighboring school districts build a calendar, 180 days for students and 185 for staff, without requiring students to participate in online learning during school closure. The Digital Wellness Initiative in this district is proudly supported, and it seems contradictory by having our students tethered to devices on school closure days. While I heard you, Dr. Therese, state that students have two days to complete work after returning, that doesn't work at the secondary level. Upon return to in-person, instruction continues, and if a student utilizes the time you indicate, they remain behind, causing an elevated level of stress and anxiety. Since the new calendars for the next three years are on the agenda for approval this evening, I would ask you, Dr. Therese, and you, board members, to consider the following questions. Are the decisions made in 2001 and 2016 still meeting the needs of our students, families, and staff members? Are the calendars, as they are presented, supporting the mental health of our students and in line with our Digital Wellness Initiative? Are you willing to make a motion to engage in public discussion regarding the implementation of e-learning versus inserting school closure days without work for students, which fosters and supports a positive home setting while fulfilling students' academic requirements? And as Maya Angelou said--
We're at time.
When you know better, you do better.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Allison Yakis. I live on Westcott Boulevard in Hopewell Township. I'm not sure if any of you saw the recent article published in November regarding the top 30 most expensive school districts in New Jersey. Well, HVRSD placed number 11 out of the top 30 most expensive. Some of our neighboring districts, such as Montgomery and West Windsor, didn't make the top 30 list, and Princeton placed at number 20, so we are outpacing them in this spending competition. That is not a good thing. According to GreatSchools.org, Central High Schools' NJ SLA assessments placed us below the state average for geometry and algebra. So how can we be just shy of the top 10 most expensive school districts in the state and have below-average testing results? In addition, taxpayer dollars are going towards amazing programs like exceptionally able and PLTW, yet we can't seem to figure out how to get the students in both of those classes at the same time, so they have to drop one and take arts. So what's the point about taxpayer dollars paying for these programs if you can only get three kids into one of the programs? I'm sincerely concerned for the fiscal and academic responsibility to the students and, as well as taxpayers, for this community. We can do better, or at least spend less money. In the near future, we are expecting an influx of many more students due to the township's housing projects, and the financial burden for this future growth should not be placed on the current taxpayers. I think it's safe to say that no one here wants a property tax increase. Hopewell Township received money, monetary benefits, from the pilot program tied to the new housing. And how is this money going to be used to support our growing school district? That's our responsibility to work that out. In the school district, is the school district currently working with Hopewell Township on a plan to improve the school infrastructure? Timberlane has unmaintained grounds with overgrown landscaping, outdated facades, crumbling ash trees in the perimeter of the property, along with a road gutter that's in the south Timberlane Drive that cars nearly pull their bumpers off every day after school because there's no place to park. So the parents make their own lot in the grass and then almost pull their front bumper off as they're pulling out with their kids in their car. And some people have really nice cars to do that. It's a shame. So it appears there's a lot of work that needs to be done academically, financially, and especially if we're planning for growth. And I'm just wondering if there's a team of people involved in what the future looks like for acquiring some of the pilot program money and how that's going to be utilized to help put the bill for this? Because the taxpayers shouldn't have to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Christine Rule, and I'm from Hopewell Township. I'm here to talk tonight about the unexpected vacancy for the school board seat. For those of you who are listening who are not aware, and I'm surprised it wasn't brought up today, but Andrea Driver stepped down at the January 3rd board reorganization meeting before being sworn in. Ms. Driver just ran for reelection in November, and she won. As a result of this unexpected vacancy, the board, and not the voters, will decide who takes her place. I understand that there are circumstances that come up, but this has happened now two years in a row, and both times very soon after the election. When this happened in December of 2022, the board president stepped down midterm, and we saw this process play out. The board selected Pamela Lilston, even though John Slotman received 177 write-in votes during the November election. It is extremely difficult to find 177 people to write your name on the ballot, and it shows that John had a lot of supporters. John applied for that vacant seat back in 2022, but the voters' intentions were ignored, and the seat was given to Ms. Lilston, who made no effort to run for the board seat in 2022, which was just a month or so prior to this happening. She did not have, she did not have one single write-in vote that year, I checked. Fast forward to 2023, John Slotman ran, as did Aileen Madicoli, and they both received thousands of votes. And Aileen lost to Pamela by an extremely small number of votes. I pray that if Aileen or John decides to apply for this vacant seat, that the voters' intentions will be considered of utmost importance. Aileen and John are both outstanding people who spent a lot of time, money, and effort running for the board this past November. Next Monday, the board will interview all interested candidates. And I hope that you will listen to the public and consider our wishes. I had a couple of questions. Why would you choose someone else that was objectively picked, who didn't come, who didn't care to run over a person with the highest votes? If you truly want the community's voices to be heard, I strongly urge you to listen to the voters in this decision. If community members want to speak their minds to the board before next Monday's interviews, who should they contact if they want to like send an email or something? And what is the format for next Monday? Is it open to the public? What time will it be? If you could just explain a little bit about that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, public comment is closed.
Could I get the board secretary to respond to Ms. Rules first before I go into the other items? One started, you know, the process of why they--
Yeah, the process will be, there'll be an open public meeting starting at 6:30 on Monday. People are welcome to watch. We've asked that the candidates not attend so that the process is maintained. That's what we did last year. We had the, we asked the candidates who weren't up yet to not arrive until it was their time. They could stay afterwards if they wanted to. But again, yes, it starts at 6:30, and anybody's welcome to attend.
And the reason why the board interviews instead of picking the next one is that's the process, that's part of our--
Part of the, part of the state process.
That's part of the state process. So when, you know, you have someone resigned before the end of their term, the board gets to interview and select who that person is next. They don't take the, they don't have to take the next person. They can interview and open it up for maybe other people that didn't want to run, that didn't know to run, or was thinking about it. It opens up the process at that point. So we are following the state guidelines for that. Any other questions? And we will be interviewing them next week?
Yeah, starting at 6:30.
Well, it's the board's decision, so would you like to receive those emails to the board email address? And if I get those, I will forward them to you as well?
Yes. Bring them on. We want to hear from them.
Oh, I have to ask them some more of these. Okay, so for, for all of my STEM questions, we do have STEM facilitators back in the budget for next year. Again, I took a pause. We didn't save any money for what we did last year. By kind of pausing the STEM facilitators, I added math teacher leaders, and I added language arts teacher leaders. And because of the work that they've been doing, we've already seen growth in math and language arts. With the teacher leaders have not only been supporting the teachers' instruction in the classroom, we have strong benchmarking in place now. We're reevaluating our math programs. We are reevaluating our English programs based on the new math and science standards and what we know about the science of reading. So that work, it's been tremendous. And we're bringing back the STEM facilitators next year. Probably because these two young men came up here and talked. That's even more reason to do it, so that's gonna happen. The elementary schedule, we have a committee working on it right now. And part of that plan is the elementary exploratory, which every child will experience, which will be consistent in every building, K through 5. And we will, we'll be doing the climate change standards. We'll be doing food sustainability work in those classes, and also the tech, the technology pieces will be happening in those classes. And we were going to be taking a STEAM approach because you already see the great work that we're doing with combining the arts and some of this work we're doing with STEM. So that part will be also, some of that social studies programming will be absorbed in that STEM program as well. So we're very excited about the work that the STEM facilitators, the new STEM facilitators will bring, and there'll be one in each building. Again, the 182 days is, is the way that the district work, and it's contracted, contractual. Having the kids work on those two days is a larger board conversation that will happen. I guess we can put on the agenda for the education program committee to look at. But as far as the contract's concerned, that can't change until the negotiations happen, the 185 days. When I was in Trenton, we went longer than 180 days because city kids needed it. I don't know that, I guess I'm worried that our kids can't handle two days of e-learning, and we got to send them out into the world. So I mean, that, you know, I'm not sure that it is a strain that, that we're concerned that it is. I don't want it to be strenuous, though, so I think maybe an approach before we just throw the baby out with the bathwater is to look at making sure we're very clear about the assignments that should be assigned, and they should not be causing the kind of stress that I'm hearing that it's causing. But these are things that, again, the board is up to the board. And I'm definitely open to whatever the community and the board asks us to do. And we will put that on the agenda for EdCom, EdProgram Committee, and probably SEL should talk about it as well. And then ultimately, it has to be personnel and the negotiation committee to talk about what happens moving forward after we're going to change what we're requiring of our educators here in the district. So that was one of the other questions. I think the scheduling issues was also came up. I know that there's times when students have conflicts when they try to schedule something. I don't, you know, I know that we have a lot of electives that we offer at the elementary, at the middle school and the high school level, at the secondary level. There will always be times when kids try to schedule something, and it's going to be a conflict. I don't care how much money we spend, how many teachers we have. That happens at every high school. That's going to happen at the college level when they go. We do our best to try to make sure that doesn't happen, but it's very difficult, especially since we offer all the choices that we offer. It's tough. You can only do so many permutations of scheduling before something runs into something else. It's very tough to try to do that. But I can say that, you know, though we, and we shared our budget here, how the spending happens in this district, we're very fiscally responsible. We spend based on what you all, the public, want. And a lot of that is tied to this class size that we enjoy here, which is unheard of in other districts. And that adds staff, and that adds salaries and health benefits, which is a major portion of our budget. So when a class creeps up to 24, 25, but someone asks, what's the class size cap? We try to stay under 24. On average, we're hovering around 19, 20, 21. When we go up to 23, 24, I start getting calls, the board start getting emails. You all get very unhappy. We have to add a teacher, right? And then adding a teacher adds to that, that bottom line. So a lot of this is human resources, a lot of our budget. So as long as that's a value that the community has, that's, that's going to drive a lot of our costs.
Something else that drives our costs, Dr. Therese, is that our schools are relatively small compared to what Montgomery and West Windsor have. That was two examples. West Windsor typically has--
Okay, thank you.
And Montgomery has low per pupil cost because their buildings are 700 and 800 people. That's two buildings for us. So it's the maintenance and the upkeep and the administration on two separate buildings adds up in that way. But we are running neighborhood schools, and they're not in a lot of ways.
There was a class minimum size ask. We don't run a class with four kids in it anymore. We very, the board has had us for years audit our classes. If the class size is small, we collapse a class. We cancel classes. We don't run the classes. Does it always equate to getting rid of a teacher? Probably not. You might have to cut a course. It may be not be enough to get rid of a whole teacher, but we have the high school principal and the middle school principal audit every class. And those that are undersubscribed, we either eliminate or we do something else, which is what we did with the Home Economic classes that we had. We revamped those because they were under-enrolled, or we eliminate them. So we do monitor the bottom end of that as well, and we don't run classes that are under, under size. The pilot program. We have been in communication with the mayors, with the township, with the township council. We don't control any of the funding. We can't make them give us any of the money. We are still in conversation with them about that. But I don't have a number that they're, that they're saying they're going to give us this amount, and nor do I have control over it. I mean, I could continue to meet with them. We will continue to meet and have conversations, but that is a township decision that we really can't force them to make that decision. Did I miss any others? Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So now we are going to move on to our consent agenda. I need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion? I'll second.
Dr. Lu, motion. Any questions? No. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? Okay, motion carries. We are, first committee is Finance and Facilities.
All right. So I think we covered a lot of the stuff that we talked about. We spent a lot of time on the referendum. We talked about the timing. I think Bob mentioned we're going to eliminate the February 5th Working Session. Bob felt that the administration team is not going to be ready. I think, well, at least the board members who are in the committee were happy to have one less meeting. And then what we're going to do, and I'm not sure if you mentioned this, Bob, but we were going to propose, and I guess we'll get to during the calendar discussion, to start the February 20th meeting early at 5:00 PM. And then I guess start with a working session on the budget and then continue to the regular and then the rest of the timeline as you've shown. Regular facilities update, should I start on the higher note or, and on the high note? Let's start with good news. The good news is we went through a period of a couple of storms, a fairly cold spell, and we've had no issues related to those. That's a good one. And then a couple of other things that are going on. I think the most significant is we have a new sewer issue at TMS. There is a potential to replace as much as 100 feet of additional sewer line. This is old galvanized pipes, sewer line that. When he described the issue, it, it's, it's pretty clear that it's just broken. And it is under the building. So that's going to have to be done. I think the plan, as Tom described it, is to kind of model through until the summer, get this started in the summer. The challenge with this one is he is concerned that we will not be able to complete all of this work during.
The issue with this one is it runs through a classroom.
Yeah.
We may have to do it in pieces.
Yep, so we'll, we'll, we'll need to make some backup plans there. There are some water line issues in Bear Tavern, Art Room. And I think they're still looking at it. At least I don't have any more details in my notes. And the HOB work at Hopeful Elementary is still not completed. The chiller still going in. The hope is to have it in by April, well, have it in and operational by April so that it's up and running in May should we need it.
The HVAC issue at Hopeful is, is a control issue. It works, but we can't control.
Oh, yeah, that.
We can't control it remotely, which is what we want to do, but it works.
Okay. And that's about it. And then I need to see, I don't think we have, I think all the items were on the consent agenda, so. Questions? Tomatoes? Nobody wants to throw tomatoes? Okay.
Okay. Personnel.
I hope my voice stays with me here. All right. Okay, so a couple of items for tonight. First and foremost, we're going to be celebrating some retirements, both who have been with the district for a long period of time. You're going to see on the agenda Vincent Goff and Bonnie Brown, 1995 and 1999 respectively. So thank you for that. We're also excited to talk about some permanent appointments on the agenda, Ms. Lori and Ms. Pigram for their roles there. So we're very, very excited about that as well. We talked a little bit in committee about this memorandum of agreement between ourselves, Hopeful Township Police Department and Pennington Police Department. The real three big changes to that memorandum of agreement that we finally were able to execute with them has to do with some of the new laws with marijuana usage, items related to body camera usage, and also this concept of handle with care. We're going to be talking a lot more about the calendar, so I'll let Ms. Smith be able to take the mic on that one. There's some other items in here on the agenda around some sidebar agreements, again, related to calendar, which you guys can read about and which we'll talk about. And then last but not least, we've made some updates to some job descriptions in our tech and our network administrator side of the district. Those are revamped to more of the 2024, what the need is. Thank you very much. And we're not going to be taking any action on that today, but these are in here for us to be able to talk about as a board and to the public. Any questions?
I do have a question. You said handle with care, and I have no idea what that is.
Ms. Smith, if you want to take that away.
I'll, I'll take that one. All right, so handle it with care is something that was started a few years ago. Every time something happens at a home where the police are called, typically after hours, and it involves one of our students from any of the schools, I am sent a form. It doesn't tell me the specifics of the nature of the event, just that the police were involved with something in the household and a student was involved. That way I can share with the building principals, who could then share with the counselors if need be. We don't know the incident that occurred again. It's just to make sure that we can check in on those students and provide them any support that they might need. I need a motion for a roll call vote on the items under Personnel.
Dr. Lilliston.
Yes.
Dr. Lou? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Dr. Resnick?
Yes.
Dr. Wilson? Dr. Genovasi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Education program.
Thanks. Yeah, so we talked about a number of items in our last education committee meeting. Ms. Lewis Botwin, the supervisor of Word Languages, proposed adding a Latin Honors IV course. Currently, we offer Honors III and the AP Latin course. Adding this mid-level will be offering additional opportunities for our kids to learn Latin language, and this will also be a staff-neutral decision as we already have teachers teaching this course. Two additional proposals from Ms. Botwin were for our district to participate in the AP Spanish exam, cultural committee's pilot, and also a WIDA pilot. For the first one, the idea is for us to get to know more about the new performance tasks as the assessment committee sometimes rolls out new assessment formats. And a benefit for our students to be part of the pilot program is for us to understand what those new assessments are. And for the WIDA pilot, WIDA is W-I-D-A, is a consortium in assessing English language proficiency. It's quite popular and used in 48 states. It's normed and they have a curriculum for this particular change. Their access kindergarten assessment is going to expand their language assessment from assessing two skills to four skills. And again, the benefit is for our students to get the first access to this newer test. And then in, in a couple of months, Ms. Lewis is going to give an overview of the language offering in our districts and how we're doing the language area. A big chunk of the last education committee time was spent on a presentation from Ms. Jessica Basly, a physics teacher, and Natalie Veal, a senior high school student who was just admitted into Princeton University. They talked about the research they did on sixth grade math placement review. The impetus for their very thorough research is really because there were concerns expressed about the current placement test and score use. For example, there is a 95% cut to allow students to go into higher level math courses. And the current setup almost makes it impossible for some students to learn geometry at eighth grade, which has significant impact on students' college application. We know there is abundant research showing the level of mass preparation and students' college success and even their earning powers down the road as they're in the workforce. So the idea is really for us to look at new ways to change the current placement and also to change the assessments and the score use metrics so we can expand the pathways for our students to get into higher level courses. The research was very impressive. They, they did a lot of analysis looking at the current test, the test content and correlations, and also the performance by gender, ethnic groups. And then Mr. Steve Wilfen followed up with some next steps discussion. One of them is about revamping the math placement test into sixth grade by looking at both the assessments and bring in additional measures. Right now is 80% looking at the test results and 20% teacher evaluation. And then we could also look at the criteria for placement into seventh grade math. For example, currently the 95% cutoff is very arbitrary. We could look at the impact on how many more students we could bring to higher math classes by lowering it to 80 or 85 or 90. So that's some analysis to be done. And then also we can look at exploring options for professional development for implicit bias in the STEM classrooms. So we encourage students of all backgrounds to really enjoy the STEM classes and be given the opportunities they, they could have. So that's pretty much it. I wonder if, because I had to leave early, I wonder if my fellow members had anything additional.
Yeah, that's very, very thorough. Thank you. Just two more small items on the math discussion. One is we also discussed making the waiver policy clear to folks. And then Mr. Wilfen committed to coming back to us in the March meeting with some specific recommendations, both for what you recommend has to be done in the short term and then because there's some short-term things that can be done. And then there are some longer terms of things which he may potentially recommend. So for the folks in the community, and I know we've had a couple come and speak to us who expressed concern about the current setup of the program, we'll hopefully have some specific things to come back to you in, within the March meeting.
Thank you. Community relations. And then SEL also did not have a meeting, but.
That's what I was going to say. I had to cancel unexpectedly because I was dealing with a student issue today. We're going to meet hopefully in the next week.
Anything on climate action?
No, no. Okay. So policy is next.
Okay. So the policy committee did meet. We met on Wednesday, January 17th. And because it was our first meeting of the calendar year, we definitely spent the early part of the meeting just resetting around the purpose of the committee as well as the procedures for the committee. We revised two policies, Policy 0131, bylaws, policies and regulations, as well as Policy 2270, religions in the school, which will be up for first reading in just a few minutes. We also reviewed two additional policies, the co-curricular activities policy and the activity participation fee program. And this was really to ensure that we're in compliance with the New Jersey Department of Education's Comprehensive Equity Plan Statement of Assurance. So under NJDOE's Comprehensive Equity Plan, the district has to confirm that we're in compliance with all codes, laws, and regulations that govern equity in education. So this was, review was really part of that assurance process. So the first one, co-curricular activities essentially defines what extracurricular activities are, the purposes behind them, and guarantees equal access to school facilities for all activities that meet this definition. It also lays out the process for how new extracurricular activities can be developed and approved, and the basic guidance around the eligibility standards. And the second one was the activity participation fee, which we do not currently have in place, but it does allow the district to charge a fee for student participation in athletic and co-curricular activities should it be needed. So the committee was recommending no changes to either of these policies at this time, so you won't see these up for first review. But we do have two policies that are up for first reading. So can I please have a motion and a second to move Policies 0131, bylaws, policies and regulations, and 2270, religions in the schools, up for first reading?
Motion.
Okay, thank you. So the first policy that we'll look at is 0131, which is bylaws, policies, and regulations. The committee did have some revisions to the specific policy. The purpose of this policy is to really assist, assist the Board of Education in bylaw, policy, and regulation management. So it's very process-oriented. And the latest revision to this policy was made in April 2009. So the current revisions are really seeking primarily to align the policy language with what we have as current practice. So in particular, the policy now references and defines the term regulations because school boards are required by statute and administrative code to adopt certain regulations. The revisions allow for the distribution of policy online through board docs because we're not really using that paper manual anymore. And we also added language indicating that board members welcome feedback on policies and our regulations from members of the school community. Last, I do want to draw a folks' attention to the first page where it says, "Select one option below in bold." Basically, the proposed revisions provide an option for the board to abolish a bylaw policy or regulation at one meeting or to not proceed in that way. The committee did not select this option. Instead, we're recommending that bylaws, policies, and regulations be abolished at a board meeting only when the proposed abolishment has been approved by the board at a previous meeting. So meaning that we will suggest that a policy be abolished, there will be sufficient time for discussion, there will be a month to get feedback, and then at next meeting, that's when the policy will be abolished. So this will ensure that the board always has at least one month advance notice for input and discussion. Just note here that the policy does provide that policies, bylaws, and regulations can be adopted, revised, or abolished without prior notice under emergency circumstances. So it wouldn't require that month wait if an emergency circumstance were to arise. So does anybody have any questions, feedback, or Bob, please jump in?
The way that happens is the board would vote, we've done this before, when in an emergency, you vote to suspend the rules.
Yeah.
And you vote to suspend and then you adopt the policy change on an emergency basis. It's very seldom used, but we have used it. I think we used it around COVID when we had to do something right away.
So any comments or questions about that?
Quick question for you. You made a comment in the beginning about a policy related to a fee for extracurricular activities. Can you just clarify that that policy is still in place, that if we wanted to make a decision?
Yes.
To make a change on that, we still can?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly. We were just reviewing that policy. It is in place. We just currently do not charge the fee. Is that right, Dr. Treese?
So we didn't abolish it because if it ever becomes a budget issue where you want to bring it back, it is, it is there for you. We just don't, we don't use it. But in it, it does say that, we made sure we had language in there around identifying kids who had need, right? So if you do bring it back, there is a requirement that we do have to identify students that can't pay the fee and that we need to absorb that as a district.
And does the policy require board approval if we were to institute these?
You would have, you would need to agree to that, yes.
And Bob, not to put you on the spot, but what, on average, what is that? What are we doing to subsidize that total price for the extracurricular by pay, by not charging? What, that became, how much money a year that we would lose in revenue?
I think it was somewhere in the area of 100,000. Kate, 612.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay. So then we have one more policy up for first reading. This is 2270, religion in the schools. So the proposed revisions that you see here are in response to updated guidance from the U.S. Department of Education. The policy provides that students hold rights to prayer and religious expression in the school setting. Although public schools cannot promote or favor specific religions, they also cannot discriminate against private religious expression by students, teachers, or other employees. So the last revision to this policy was also made in April 2009. So. So the revisions that you see here are pretty small in nature. They're not, they're not super substantive, but what they do is they change some of the terminology, and in particular, they change the language around religion to prayer and religious expression. And then what they also do is reference the U.S. Department of Education's 2023 guidance as the resource on this subject, which essentially eliminates the need for us to revise the policy every time there's a change to the subsequent federal guidance. Any questions or comments on that one? So the last thing I just wanted to share is that some members of our committee, thank you, Mr. Resnick, as well as folks from the administration, have asked us to look at the random drug testing policy. We are slated to do so at the February Policy Committee meeting. Some board members, as I said, have raised concerns about this. What we did want to share was that we've invited Principal Riley to discuss and share data related to the high school's experience implementing this policy. I do want to note that we are recommending that any abolishment of this policy or changes to this policy do occur at the end of the school year. The reason that we discussed for this is, first of all, to ensure consistency and implementation across the school year, and second, to align timing with the current vendor contract for the testing. We also think this will allow sufficient time to gather feedback from the school district's Drug and Alcohol Committee, as well as other stakeholders who want to provide input on this policy. So that's it.
So all those in favor of the policies for first reading? Anyone opposed or abstaining? No, okay. And then the next item are the school calendars.
So I'll just share a little bit about the process. I apologize, I wasn't looking to present this evening, so it's just a summary for you. And hopefully I can answer some questions from the committee. So the Hopewell Valley Calendar Committee consisted of 20 members. It included eight parents, five administrators, seven teachers. Dr. Treese also brought the calendar to the DEI committee after the drafts were created for their input as well. You may remember in the fall, a survey was sent out to all parents K-12. It was also sent out to students 612 and all staff. We had about 2,000 respondents. 56% of the respondents were parents, 26% were students, 17% were staff. The committee worked very collaboratively to establish the following updates to the three-year calendar. So the addition of the Eid holiday, they changed parent-teacher conferences to the week of the NJEA convention. They started Staff Professional Development Day before Labor Day weekend. Students begin the day after Labor Day, which was a big comment that showed up frequently on the survey, and school ends before the Juneteenth holiday each of the three years. With the assistance of the HVEA and HVESPA leadership, based on survey of staff on how they would feel about starting prior to Labor Day and actually in August for their two professional development days, that was overwhelmingly positive and in support of that. The two sidebar agreements that you saw on the personnel agenda were created and drafted for your approval this evening. A few things from the survey that I thought would be helpful for all of you to know. So regarding spring break, it was all over the board with responses. So we had 33% said they wanted it to be the first full week of April. 16% wanted it the first, the last full week of March. 12% wanted it the second week of April. And 39% wanted it tied to the holiday. So that was a little bit of a mix in terms of that. The end of the school year was overwhelmingly, 69% were very concerned about the year ending late. And some of the comments from the survey included summer camps, pre-college programs, those who go into the military have to leave early, students who start working, vacations that are planned, and then basically, students are spent by the end of the school year. And when you have the Juneteenth holiday in there, the way that it falls, it often breaks up the last few days of school, and then students have to come back after that long weekend, which, you know, messes up the instruction a little bit there. In terms of the half-days, I know that this has been a topic of conversation. However, 70% of respondents said they were, they were not concerned at all about the half-days that were built into the calendar. There was a lot of discussions on the conferences and when they should fall. Comments showed a few things. One, a few years ago, when we switched to trimesters at the elementary level, those conferences were supposed to be changed. Where they fell did not fall where, I guess, that committee had discussed they should when they went to trimesters. They really wanted something that was more in the middle of the trimester, not towards the end. In addition, having them during NJEA convention is before the end of the marking period at the 612 level. So it gives parents a little bit more heads up and conversation with the teacher if there are any issues with their students and that. Families responded that there was a lot of stress on them having those half-days leading up to Thanksgiving, especially with the holiday and people coming into town and planning for that. So the committee decided to change that to the NJEA convention week. So it's that first week of November. In addition, for the spring breaks, historically, we've had spring break the first full week of April, or sometimes the end of March into April, based on when the religious holidays fell. So for the next two out of the three calendar years, the religious holidays actually fall during the week. For the last three calendar years, a lot of them have fallen on the weekends. So you might have gotten one or two. But for the 2425 school year, Rosh Hashanah, Diwali, Lunar New Year, Eid, and Good Friday all fall during the work week. So they were trying to balance when that fell, and then also how many days were off, and looking at the survey and the end of the year, trying to end prior to that Juneteenth holiday. So for the 2425 year, the spring break actually includes the Eid holiday. For the 2526 year, it includes Good Friday, but they're all that last week of March, first week of April, and then it just wound up working for the 2627 school year. Those are the three calendars for your approval.
Can I ask a question, just make a comment? I just, I am so impressed by the participatory process that went into creating these calendars, truly. I filled out the survey as a parent, and I was like, wow, that's so great that they asked me. But no, but the fact that there was a committee formed and huge participation. I mean, this is just a massive response rate, and even from the students, which I think is super cool. So I just want to thank you all for engaging in that process in that way. This is more a curiosity, but did you see differences between the students' responses and what the parents and the faculty were saying or the staff were saying in any of the items where you had to sort of decide?
Students just wanted more time off.
Sure. Okay.
Surprise, surprise. They actually wanted four-day weeks whenever possible. But they, I will say, the students were very supportive of ending the school year before the Juneteenth holiday as well. They were concerned about going too far into June.
I have a question. So for the 2025 year, right, which is the first calendar in the trip?
2021.
Well, the 2425 school year. Did you say that you intend the spring break to correspond to Easter as well? Is that the decision?
No, the first year Eid actually falls on March 31st, and that starts off spring break.
Okay, so that first year is Eid that corresponds with the spring break. And then for the other two years, it just so happens that Easter...
The second year, the second year is, is Good Friday with Easter. The third year, it actually is after the fact. Yeah, so they were just keeping with the same end of March, beginning of April. They had done it for the first two years, so they did it with the third year.
So if the plurality of responses wanted to align the calendar, the spring break to the religious holidays, it seems like you didn't. It seems like you kind of kept it as it is, which is the first week of April, last week of March, and then...
Well, it aligned with Eid for the first year, it aligned with Good Friday for the second year.
And the third year.
Third year, it didn't. So they were keeping with that because some of the responses, as I said, the responses were a little bit all over the place. There was, do you want me to go through the percentages again or not?
No, I got the percentages.
Oh, okay, okay.
And that's why I'm saying the morality though wanted to...
Right. So they were just trying to stay consistent because that was something that the parents on the committee really felt was important, that there was consistency over those three years. So they all fall at the end of March, beginning of April for the three years, and they were able to work it out so that we ended before the Juneteenth holiday.
I'll, I'll make a comment that I was actually planning on making even before we had a lot of feedback on the learning rate. I wish that there was a presentation from the committee before we were asked to approve the calendars. Right? And not kind of being thrown at this because I haven't seen any summary of the feedback and what the committee was thinking. And so when I, as a board member or as a community member, really didn't have an opportunity to say, oh, well, this is what you're thinking, this is the kind of feedback. Yeah. I was saying that I wish that there was feedback. The more presentation before the calendar, the more the committee, right, so what you can get, and some of the thinking and some of this may seem to gain, but the reality of the fact is that it affects a lot of things for a lot of people. How that corresponds to the timing of all the planned extracurricular activities, which is going to affect the religious stuff and all that, and the state with all kinds of other things. So I appreciate these things, but I couldn't, five minutes ago, I've not heard of any of the data, trying to work on this, you know, like, I don't understand where the calendars, you know, the religious stuff, the year, the whole, I don't know.
And that's a good point. I don't think in the past that's ever happened with the board, so that's why that didn't take place. But, you know, I can certainly bring that up for the future.
The way committees have worked in the past in this district, right? And if you want to change the whole program, that's fine, you can. You send the surveys out, we have a committee, we get people from the, you know, a nice cross-section of students, parents, all these folks weigh in so that we don't have the full-on discussion. Because if that's what you're going to do it, then everybody weighing in, that looks very differently. So the committee usually makes the decision. I share a degree note what happens if there are questions. But if you'd like us to take a step in between that, where we present to the board first, if the committee are in the hole, where you can get community feedback, and then we do it, then that'll be a shift.
Well, certainly, as a board member, I feel like I need to understand the reasoning for approving something. If I, if I don't have any issues with what I'm seeing at all, I, I will usually approve it, right? Because it makes sense to me. But, you know, there's going to be times where I'm looking at things, and if I feel like the community's interest is well reflected in what's going on, even if I'm not personally one of the person on board, I'll be inclined to go, okay, we've done the job we've done. But on this one, I'll say I'm personally not happy about the timing of the spring break, right? But I also don't know really what the discussion behind it was, so I don't know if this was well reflected in the, right, if the community input was well reflected. Or at least, I didn't know until five minutes ago, and I have about five minutes to process it before voting on the approval, right?
And you didn't also share all of the things that they did, the committee. One of the things, you shared the data of what people said on the spring break, and it was all over the place. So then what the committee did was they actually took the calendars from all the districts around us, so we could hold up. And most of the districts around us really only have next year, they're still working on their next three out. But we were able to get next year's calendar. We saw that a lot of them were aligned to what we were doing, which means something for teachers who have students in different areas, districts, parents who live in this district that also have kids in different school districts. So they took all of that in consideration as they landed on, and trying to, you know, honor the requests for recognizing certain holidays, all of those things. And then finally, coming down to, well, if we do this for two years, why don't we be consistent in that the other year? So all that was part of it. Adding that other step where we have the board kind of go through something as complex as this, certainly...
And, and that's not what I was proposing, right? I'll tell you what my, what my wish is, right? What I would like to see, and I'm going to state this, I would like to ideally table the motion, have us in the next meeting have a presentation that actually just summarizes what you and, what you and Tana said, but in a, in a, in a slide format, right? And also, they'll give me at least one, more than one night, but at least one night, just to, right? So that's the preferred approach for me personally, obviously, to do some of the folks here.
Do you want to talk first, or you like? So Alex, I appreciate what you're saying and, you know, and I know calendars are almost like a hot button in this because you can never please everyone. But after hearing all of the work that was done, I mean, it sounds like the committee did the due process. So like, us as a board, we work through committee. And it sounds like this committee really did their due diligence and got teachers and parents and community members, and everyone had a voice in it. And so if we want to table it, I would actually prefer to put it to a vote of board members who may want to table it because I feel like...
It would happen.
Yes, we're just seeing the calendars for the first time, but I trust the process. I trust the process of the board, I trust the process of the committee and the team. And it sounds like they did a very good job in getting all of the different sort of stakeholders that this calendar affects and coming to a decision that was very thought out. So I understand wanting to know more about the process, but I also think where we are.
So I agree with you on the process, and I'm not trying to eliminate the committee process. But to me, the committee process means that at the tail end of it, when a, when the committee makes a recommendation, because at the end of the day, right, the committee makes a recommendation, not a decision, where as a board still have to vote for it to become a decision. They ought to prepare a readout for the board that we'll, that we have a chance to go through, right? So a slide presentation, had we presented it, I would have seen it in the minutes, I would have had time to think about it. That didn't happen yet. That doesn't happen all the time. I will say, you know, 90% of things that we discuss are fairly straightforward, thankfully. But especially if you know that a calendar is a hot button issue, right? And I'm perfectly willing to bring a motion to table the previous motion.
Before you do that, Alex, I just want to point a clarification for you. Your concern is just that as a board member, you haven't had a chance to see the actual results of it prior to the vote. It's not anything to do with public interaction or public engagement?
Yes. I, I want to see, as a board member, I want to see not just the final recommendation, but the rationale for the recommendation with sufficient notice.
Fair.
Wait, I have a question. Would that, wouldn't it be, wouldn't you be able to see that stuff, all that, that work, if Tana gave you a, like, a report that she just gave us? I mean, I, it opened up my eyes to understand what happened. I guess I could have seen it before, and I would have...
I, I, yes.
Would that be okay?
So that would be perfectly fine, just not right before the, right? Not with the minutes warning, yes.
Yeah, right.
Yes, not over the five minutes warning.
Yeah, I also have a comment. I had the opportunity to listen to the, hear the results in the Personnel Committee meeting before this one. I really appreciate the thorough process that the committee went through to come up with the various recommendations. As Jackie mentioned, it's, it's very challenging to accommodate all the different needs and one... wants. That said, there, there is one issue that I would like to push us to think a little bit harder. That's about the early closings. Tana mentioned that 70% of the respondents do not have an issue with that. I would really want us to dissect the data a little bit further. We know that the 400-some students, they want early, they want a closing. If you ask them, do we want the four days closing? They will say yes. I'm, I'm not suggesting their opinion is not important, but just in the grand scheme of things, how, how much of a decision maker they should be in the process because it's really incumbent on the parents to make all the childcare arrangements. I would also encourage us to dissect the data by K through five families and six through 12. Because if you have a sixth grader or older, you, you can leave them at home. So it's really the families with younger kids. I know 30%, it's not a tremendous number on the surface, but do we really want to leave 30% of our families struggling on those days? And also, what if the survey results is, let's say that majority of the families want to change it, what would be our alternative options in those cases? So I just want us to think a little bit harder on this.
One thing I will say though, the data isn't broken down by grade level of parents. So I can provide you with the data, but you're only going to see parent, student, or teacher.
Okay. Yeah. So wait, so yeah, in the future, if we do similar surveys, it will be very helpful because we could say maybe 60% of the younger kids' parents, they really have a problem with this arrangement.
I mean, I would, I'm favorable if we want to do a vote for what Alex is referring to.
So, well, yeah. So I'm going to make a motion to table the previous motion.
Second.
Okay. So all in, is, is
Yes. So we're not voting on it, right? Right, right. Tabling means we're not voting on the calendar in this meeting. It'll be for next meeting.
Just means it stays on the table. It has to be removed from the table. It has to be voted and removed from the table automatically. People vote no.
So we are going to do a roll call?
Can you clarify, but the roll call is about, do we want to table the motion? Do we want to table the calendar discussion until next meeting?
Yes. So if you say yes, you want to table it.
You can, you can table it to a specific time.
All right. So, so, so let me revise. I want to make a motion to table the discussion to the next board meeting.
Second, the motion.
Yes.
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 So next, and that is what civil engagement looks like. Review of board calendars.
Yes.
So facilities, I'm going to start with them.
The week of the 12th is what we're looking at.
Well, or
Yeah. Usually on Mondays or weekends, don't fuck on the phone for it.
Do it.
Yeah. Does.
Yep.
I think we have SCL on the calendar for February 8th. I don't know if that's good or not.
Yeah. So I've, we've been, I, I know you can't make the 4:31.
No, I can do the fourth. Oh, no, I can't. I have another meeting.
Is it just that one time? Because I think everybody else can do the 4:30. Would you mind if we held it or do we need everybody?
Not at all. And I can, I can hop on late.
Okay.
I just have an earlier meeting.
So it'll be, oh my goodness. My, my
February 8th.
I, uh, what was, I have to pull it up.
It was February 8th from four.
4:30, yeah. I can't do the first, but the 8th I could do. Is that, is that still good with you, Pam and Mike?
February 8th at 4:30?
Yeah. Okay, great.
Do you want to stack that with community relations for it so that everything's clear?
Wait, wait. When are you talking about community relations?
February 8th at 3:30.
What?
February 8th at 3:30 or 5:30.
February 8th at 3:30.
Or 5:30.
I am good with that.
So let's 3:30.
Okay.
Does 3:30 work for you along with community relations?
Community relations.
Community relations?
Okay.
Can you do that at 3:30 on the 8th?
5:30.
3:30, it is.
3:30.
Okay. So the, the board meeting is going to be the 20th at 5 o'clock.
At 5 o'clock?
The 20th.
Yeah. Because of the extended session for the board.
Okay. So personnel, I'm messing that up for that day. So you need another day for that. You could do it earlier that day on the 20th. Do you want to do it or?
I can do a online one.
Do a first thing in the morning?
Before 5:00. Yeah. What time?
Early.
Why?
Yeah.
But
You can do it 8:30, 8:30 and then add.
Um, I can do mine. Does that work?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Policy and CNI. Go ahead.
The 13th at 4 works well. 13th at 4, I can do that.
Yeah, that works for me too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I might be a minute late.
Can I ask Lydia and Dicky, do you anticipate this to be a one hour or two hours?
Wait, wait.
Okay, so you're asking me that.
Like no more than five slides walking through it. And then if they have actual week, get them ahead of time.
Every, almost every day is not weekend, just not Monday. Could you do Wednesday afternoon, the 7th at like 2:30 or 3:00?
Yes.
Motion to accept calendars?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Calendar.
Yeah.
Of public comment. Uh-oh. I need my little speech. Okay, we are entering into our last public comment. On any items of interest, members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a minimum, a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You're asked to state your name, address, and municipality in response to your comments. The Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at future meetings so that the matter is researched by the district administration. Public comment is now open.
Kate Hamm Pennington. While I know this is not the reason that you tabled the discussion regarding the calendar, I thank you for being brave and bold and standing up to have a voice in saying that you are not comfortable voting on something with information that you've just received five minutes prior. So I appreciate the motion and the vote to table the calendar discussion. While you're doing that, keep in mind the number of half days, which apparently according to the survey, 70% of parents were not worried about the half days. I've sent you all an email, didn't hear back from any of you, but let me publicly state that half days are a complete disservice to some of our students in this district. Students who are at Timberlane and CHS and receive special services, related services during PAC or recitation do not receive their services on half days because it does not exist. That means an entire week during teachers convention and almost an entire week during Thanksgiving, our students are not receiving services. In addition, our students in the district who receive free and reduced lunch, because there is no lunch, those students are not receiving and not entitled to free and reduced lunch. So while you're looking at the excess number of half days that are there, keep that in mind. In addition, I know that the district partners with the Hopewell Valley YMCA to provide at a cost to families, childcare for before and after care on those half days at the K5 level. For those, someone made a comment earlier about sixth grade students who are able to stay home alone, that's not entirely true. There are sixth grade students in this district whose parents do not feel comfortable leaving them home alone. But those students, grades six through 12, in addition to our children with special needs, do not have an opportunity on those half days for childcare. Parents either must take off of work, barter services with other, or find an ulterior motive. So when you're looking at half days, there's a great deal to consider. I'm going to circle back to the e-learning because I don't think that my comments were blunt enough. We are not looking at changing the teacher contract. Nobody has asked to change the 185 days. What we are asking is for the board to look at the requirement for students to engage in 182 days versus 180 days. The teachers are going to continue doing their PD and however they need to do on those additional two days. But I'm asking the district and the board to look at providing supports for our youth who are struggling by reconsidering those e-learning days and just making them school closure days like every other district does. Thank you.
are different. They cannot, Lydia, be left alone at home. My son probably till 12th grade will not be left alone. So if we can put that on the table, because I don't think anybody's special ed here, right? I know you're not on the board, so she's a queen. Thank God you're here. And I want to add, I don't speak because I feel special ed's unheard. So I'm getting up to follow Kate with that because special ed is unheard.
Hi, my name is Sylvia Cosas, 7 Y Dell Drive in Pennington. I just would like a little bit more clarification about next Monday's meeting for the selection to replace Andrea Driver for the board. Is it a meeting that will come under the heading of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings law? Meaning that will it be given public advance notice in the newspapers? And will there be an opportunity for public comment like at the board meeting tonight? So if you could just clarify a little bit more the process that that is going to go through, that would be helpful. And again, as Christine said, you know, we, we talk a lot about voter suppression, the right of voting, how important it is, why we go to vote, and it's our civic duty. And 3,501 residents of Hopewell voted for two candidates who, if they do put their resumes in for this position, I think the board really needs to consider the importance of that. Because people went to the polls and these two people also spent time and energy and put forth there themselves in front of the community and the community voted. So I encourage you, please, to consider that. Thank you.
Hi, Allison Yakis, again from Hopewell Township. I'm just wondering, I think I heard a mention of the last referendum. Is there still a mortgage on that or has it been paid off? And then we'll be, is this like taking out a second mortgage on your home with a second referendum? I'm not sure exactly the longevity, the financial plan for that and how that works out if we haven't paid off the first referendum and we're buying into a second one. So I'm just concerned for that. I'd also like to, not to beat a dead horse, but the e-learning days, I have a, an eighth grader and a 10th grader. And I'm not sure if it's because of the scarring from COVID, but everyone's very much done with the e-learning. And the e-learning days seem more like busy work and like arts and craft activities and goofy things for the kids to do, which is fine for the little kids. But anyway, it just seems like people are done with the e-learning days. And my kids actually said to me the last, for the last one, we'd rather go outside and play in the snow or go sledding. So I think maybe we need to reconsider the e-learning days and just give them back. We, no one wants them. And then I know we're not taking a vote, but my official vote on the turf field for TMS is it's a complete waste of money and not necessary and a huge amount of money that we'd be spending on something that needs to be redone in 10 or 15 years, I think I heard. I couldn't quite hear the comment, but it doesn't, there's no longevity in that. And my kids have both done fine without a turf field at Timberlane. So we can cut that off the budget. That's just my personal opinion. Thank you.
I stayed here this late. I might as well talk again. That's kind of how I'm feeling. Hannah Williams, Pennington. I want to reiterate, we are not asking for this board to talk about teacher negotiations. I'm asking the board, when you have this next week, to take in information, if any of you have contact with the calendar committee, why can't, please ask, and then maybe you can have the question answered for us, why can't those two e-learning days be changed into just days off? They can be marked in the calendar. I understand they have to be marked in the calendar. They're in-person days if there is a snow day. And I took a little bit of offense to hear like we're married to for the kids. For the adults, that's contrary. So, that would have to be changed at that point. But it's really up to the committee, I mean, to the board and the community, what they want for that. And it's just been around for a long time. I don't know the beginning of it, and it's really up to you if you decide you want to keep it. The referendum question, Bob, I'm going to defer to you on that. The question was, has that money's rolled off the original debt? And it has not.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Bond issues are different than mortgages. It's just a separate bond issue. We had multiples. We've had up to five at one time. These are just big. The other one, the first bond issue expires in 2032. This is additional debt the district would take on.
And then the final thing is, and then we have the comments about the calendar committee that the board has heard. Then there was a question about the process of, will the meeting be advertised? It is an open meeting?
Meetings, the meeting's been advertised already. It's posted on our website. It'll be a public meeting. There'll be one public comment at the beginning of the meeting. The board will interview, and then they'll go into closed session to discuss the candidates and will not come out afterwards.
So, you might, you know, you might also want to think about, you know, if I were a candidate, do I want a whole audience of people sitting there? I mean, the person's going to be interviewed by the whole board, is how the process went the last time. So, you know, it's up to you. You're welcome to come, but that's what you're putting your neighbors through. They're going to be interviewed by the whole group here, not us, because we don't have a say. But they're already on the hot seat. So, that's the only piece. But you're welcome to come.
Sure. Ms. Hamm, I wanted to thank you for your compliment, but I do have to say that took no courage. If I had needed courage to express my concerns, then I would say we have a really serious problem on the board. I mean, we had a disagreement that got discussed. We took a vote. That's normal stuff. So, I appreciate your comment, but I do want everybody to know that took no courage on my part. I was never concerned about being, about anything that would take courage.
And, oh, I'm sorry. I just want to make a quick comment about a claim that was made in the last public comment section about Hopewell being the 11th most expensive district in the state. The article that mentions that, which was published by NJ 101.5, puts Hopewell as the 11th highest per pupil spending, which is a bit misleading to say it's the most expensive. And in the same article, it also does not list Hopewell on the top 20 highest property tax bills in New Jersey. So, I just want to make that as a clarification for the board and for the public.
And I also wanted to clarify, actually, students with disabilities do have a voice on the board. I have a child with an IEP and had a child with a 504. So, I do hear you and understand from personal experience. And I know everyone's experience is different, but there are ears and people who care.
I'll just make, geez, I'll try to make two quick comments without my voice cracking. First and foremost, I think for the board, for the administration, I think I've heard enough tonight that we're going to have to have some serious conversations about e-learning. I mean, clearly, there's a lot of discussion here, and I think that we need to rethink that soup to nuts. That took no courage, by the way, to say that out loud either. I just appreciate the feedback from the group on that and the emails. Secondarily, just back again to the finance comments and spending, I'm going to say this a lot over the course of the next year. I'm going to be a broken record about it. A lot of what we're doing right now, we have no control over when it comes to the spending. And, you know, for someone like myself who believes I'm very fiscally responsible and am sitting here looking at this, I'm amazed every time I sit down in our finance committee and have a conversation with Bob around how much we actually don't control locally. And I think for all of us, we've got concerns. There's a reason why Bob put inflation as number one on that list for this referendum. And there's a whole lot of ways that all of us in this room can have our voices be heard in a bunch of different ways for that particular issue that isn't local. It's more at state level, county level, and above. So, I'm just going to continue to say that, because I think that we just all need to level set around the real reality of what we got right here. And this is coming from somebody who, I'm cheap, candidly, so.
So, it sounds like we are going to have those conversations. And again, that's not, they're not, they're not hard conversations to have. And we do, we do have on the calendar committee representation from special ed PTO. So, when they come present, you will see all that, that work and effort that they did along the way.
So, motion to move into executive session. Oh, four. Wait, wait, hold on. To discuss HIV and a student matter.
Thank you for coming.
Will action be taken? Okay. No action will be taken.
Motion.
Motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposing?
Abstaining.
Abstaining.
I just took one.